Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee, uh, School Committee Meeting for November 21st. It is now 6:05 PM and the meeting is starting. A roll call, please, Ms. Garcia.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Fave?
Present.
Ms. Brunel?
Here.
Mr. Romero?
Here.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Um, Ms. Rivera-Colone?
Here.
Ms. Feliciano?
Mr. Wallahan?
Here.
Mr. Callamore?
Ms. Wilson?
Are we doing the student reps?
Student reps, Adam Kennedy?
And Jacque Santos?
Here.
Thank you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, everyone, I apologize for the late start to this meeting. First off, just Governor Baker signed a bill into law in June 16, 2021, which has been constantly extended, allowing public bodies to hold remote meetings. Members of the public can access it through the Zoom, which is located on the HPS website. And pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. Um, being that we do have one of our school board members on Zoom today, um, we will go ahead and for all, um, votes, we'll do by roll call. So with that being said, we're gonna go ahead and start off with student showcase, and I believe we have Sullivan School here today. Superintendent Soto?
Yes, we do have Principal Sasha Garcia-Malu, um, and she's gonna kick off our student showcase for this month. Sasha? Let me know. Hi, everybody, um, and hi, Holyoke Community. We are at Sullivan School. Joining me today is Lori Banks, who is our math coach, uh, and potentially Nina Nodrebo will be joining, who is the grade five math teacher, um, at our school. Uh, today, I'm gonna pass the torch over to Lori, who is going to, uh, present to you, um, the math and Mondrian art, um, exhibit that our grade five students created, uh, with the support of Nina Nodrebo, their lead teacher, and Mariel Sabugo, who is their special education, um, teacher. And just a little context is Piet Mondrian is a Dutch painter, uh, who is also known as a, a, a lead pioneer, eh, for the 20th century abstract art. Lori, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh, for allowing us to showcase what our scholars are doing at Sullivan School in fifth grade math. Um, I believe Ms. Nodrebo is also here. Um, and so this is a presentation connecting, uh, the work that the fifth graders were doing with regards to volume and the Dutch artist Piet Mondrian, and we're all, I'm sure, familiar with this composition. So, um, I just have two brief videos. Uh, the first video showcases one of our scholars talking about what this process meant to him, and it is, he's being interviewed by Ms. Sabugo, our, uh, special, our inclusion specialist. And then the second video are three other students talking about the connection of the math that they did and how it relates to the shape that was created, was, be it a square or be it a rectangle. So if we can advance to the next slide, we can watch the first video with Ms. Sabugo. And of course, the video cannot be loaded because that is technology. Um, I'm not quite sure, can we try maybe the second slide to see if that video is there? Okay, so, um, basically, uh, Jenny L., what he was talking about was how he really liked the process being hands-on, um, and how he really, really kind of took a leadership, leadership position with his group and with his classmates by kind of supporting them with the math, talking about how he can, um, use the math to recreate the art. And Ms. Sabugo pointed out that it really was an engaging way for the kids to connect what they were learning about area to recreating a famous composition. Um, the next video, uh, the, the three young ladies that would be presenting, um, were really, really, you know, very sweet, very endearing, talked about the math that they did, where they multiplied the length and the width to find the area of something, but then they also touched upon how if they were multiplying two numbers that were the same, that their shape would be a square and connecting, you know, squaring a number to the shape of a square versus if the two dimensions were different, that they would be getting a rectangle. So, um, it's, it's, it's unfortunate that we can't see the videos. Um, I don't know if there's a chat that I could pop the, a link into if folks wanna go and, um, maybe view this on, on, of later afterwards, but it really was a wonderful experience for the kids.
And Sam, I, I'm, I'm not sure, Ms. Garcia, I'm not sure if, uh, if you're able to make me a co-host, I can, or share my screen. I have the videos up and, and can display it too, but thank you Lori for that summary. But yeah, we, we have shared it with the, with the committee, and, um, we'll put it on social media as well. Um, I'll get with Jenny tomorrow and make sure that, that, that gets put up. Sam, do you think like we could just play it now? Can you? Look at that. That's, uh, Janaya, and she is at that point expressing what her equation was and why her shape came out to be a square. Go ahead, Lori.
And the, and the other two are talking about how their areas, uh, their dimensions were different numbers, so they ended up with rectangles. If, if you get a chance, um, I would encourage you to watch it because it really, it's, it's kids talking about the learning and, and what they got out of it, and I love always making those connections between art and math. I, I've done a lot of other projects in the past, and it's just wonderful to see the tradition continue.
Yeah, thank you Lori. We'll, we'll be sure to, so we've sent this video to everybody on the, the school committee, um, and, uh, so that the public can view it, we'll make sure, uh, that we get it on all our social, you know, put it on Facebook and get it on our website so that, um, I'm assuming, you know, there were parent release forms already, um, so the parents wouldn't mind, uh, their students being showcased on our website. Uh, we'll make sure to do that, so thank you so much. Thank you for hosting us, and, uh, sorry that you couldn't see the, the video live, uh, but I hope you enjoy it when you do view it. Uh, thanks, Holyoke.
Thank you. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments? I know we weren't able to watch the video, so I mean, we can always come back and have them come back, we'll, we'll watch it, um, if they can even post it on the HPS website, um, and then ask you guys to come back and maybe even have the students here if they're able to. Thank you. Gonna move on to the MASs Award Recognition. Mister, uh, I'm, I apologize, Superintendent Soto?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so today, we wanted to award, um, at least one certificate, but, uh, there is an M.A., MASs, uh, Certificate of Academic Excellence, um, and this year, two students were nominated, one from Holyoke High North Campus, um, our very own Jace Lee Santos. I'm hoping that, that I pronounced that right. What's the correct pronunciation? Jake Ali? Okay, Jake Ali Santos. Um, and then we have one student from the Dean Campus, Ruth Ortiz Torres, who, um, wasn't able to be here today due to a prior engagement, and, you know, part of the criteria is their three-year cumulative average and their rank in their class, and it's a selection that, that I personally make, so I do, um, I do have Lori here that I wanted to call Present this award to Jake Ali.
So I do wanna let you know that she had no idea she was getting this award tonight. Since I knew she was gonna be here, she had no idea she was getting this award, so you were able to give one of Jake Ali. That's the beauty of having a really involved student, that they get this moment, so congratulations. So I wanna talk a little bit about Jake Ali, so she's a student who challenges herself with AP classes, with dual enrollment classes, she's an athlete, she's a member of the softball team, she was a cheerleader at one point, she's somebody who, if there's an award to get, she gets it. So she was a habit of work and learning, um, Howler of the Week, she was an Awesome Night of the Week in 11th and 12th Grade, the Howlers was in the 9th and 10th Grade, she's been a member of our redesign team, um, as a student going on virtual excursions to schools, um, to kind of improve our high school experience for students. She is, um, planning on having a future in, um, science, she wants to be either a, um, a neurosurgeon, nothing, nothing big at all. Um, and I think what I found the most awes- one of the awesome things I found about her was when I was looking at her brag sheet and how she, the first three words that she would think of when she defines herself is extrovert, hardworking, and determined, but I have to say that she's super smart, she's responsible, she is always positive, and she's probably one of the most humble kids I know, despite being an absolute rock star, so you're gonna make me cry, cuz I love you, but congratulations.
Honestly, I'd just like to thank HHS for really building me up as a student because before I did everything, I thought of myself as, oh, I'm just gonna go to Heisman, I'm gonna do whatever, and then meeting McKenna, you're truly inspiring, it was all you, cuz you're telling me, you should join this club, and you should join this club, you should do a portfolio. And my first ever portfolio was with the mayor, and I was, I was so scared, I was terrified with my administrators, and I remember that day, I was shaking, I was like, Miss McMillian, I can't do this, I can't. And honestly, HHS built my courage, built my strength, and I have all of my greatness because of them.
Um, Ms. Garcia, do we have any one who has signed up for public comment? Do we have one person in the audience right now that would like to make public comment? Um, I don't wanna pronounce your name wrong. I know the first one's Katie. You know, I was gonna say that, I said, that is too obvious, it's gotta be something else, and so I was gonna say Bullock?
Yes, Bullock.
Okay.
Like a bow on your head, like you're like a lollipop.
Okay. So, um, just wanna let everyone know for public comment, it's three minutes. Um, I don't, I'm not trying to be rude or nothing, it's just, it's three minutes. Um, were you the one who also submitted?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so we also have that, everybody has that in front of them, this is going into record. Um, so all we ask is you state your name, your address, and go right ahead with your public comment.
My address is like where I live.
Yep.
All right, hi, my name is Katie Bullock, I live at 285 Brainerd Street in South Hadley, and I am here to speak on behalf of many McMahon teachers, staff, and, um, community members. Um, on October 28th, 2022, district leadership chaired several decisions that were made regarding the rezoning and administration. Um, these decisions did outrage many of the staff members at McMahon for a multitude of reasons, and in response, we drafted a letter of concern to Superintendent Soto and the HPS cabinet members, which we had shared with them. Um, please understand, I can only speak for the McMahon community, um, I do see that there is concern throughout the rest of the HPS district as a whole, um, as well. This letter, which was signed by over thirty of our staff, paraprofessionals, custodians, and cafeteria staff, uh, explained that many of us fail to understand how so many of these drastic rezoning changes to our district were truly in the students' best interest, um, academically and socially, emotionally. Um, I do have physical copies of this letter, if you guys would like that, um, later. Um, but to begin, the, the change in the new school zones is really completely disruptive for our elementary students. When voting for a new, uh, middle school, it was not made clear that a large chunk of our students would be rezoned, um, even if our school was not being directly impacted through the rezoning by this. We understood our McMahon Middle School students would obviously be rezoned, but we didn't understand is that while Sullivan's elementary students would also be rezoned, we didn't realize how significant, um, our rezoning would be specifically, again, at McMahon. Um, from what we were able to gather, about seventy percent of our students will not be returning to us the following academic year, and that was very shocking and very disheartening to us. Um, many will be rezoned to Donahue or Lawrence instead. Um, we don't see any slow rollout or phasing of this change either, and that's also a concern. Um, it's just an abrupt and harsh change, and we're really concerned about how that's gonna impact our students, our staff, and our family members within our community. On top of that, and secondly, um, we were told that our administration was going to change as well, and that also completely blindsided us. Knew that the rezoning would change students, we did not see an administration change coming. Um, from what I was able to gather and go back through a lot of the PowerPoint presented by HPS, it was mentioned that Phase One would announce leadership. It was never seen, at least by me, that it would be a change drastically through multitudes of schools, um, that specifically at our school, Kate Ritchie and Destiny Meeker would be pulled from that community and placed elsewhere. And again, our confusion and frustration comes from, our school is a strong leader in HPS and has done very well, and our leadership is pulled again without voice, um, without, um, response to our concerns, and we are just failing to see how that could be the best for our community and for our, and when I say our community, I do mean staff community, sure, but our students as well. They have worked there for years to build and connect with those families so deeply and create an acad- academically driven place, that it's hard to see the, the positivity in that at this time. Um, we, we know that, uh, this change has been coming for quite some time, we know that you guys have worked very hard and diligently to plan this out and have worked to communicate with us. However, we feel that there have been some red flags along the way that could have been, um, addressed because the engagement has been low in those, in those sharings and notifications. And I say notifications because two hundred views on a Facebook video is not engagement. Nine hundred people responding to surveys is great, but it is not a fair and adequate cross-section of the HPS community, and that should have, in our eyes, been a, a point of pause to say what we're doing and what we're sharing isn't working, and I'm not here to tell you how to do your jobs or how to do that, but that should have been, I think, a pause of discussion, um, and reflection for this committee and for the HPS cabinet to see what can we do better to bump those numbers, cuz that's not even half, that's like twenty percent of the community, and that's, that's not okay in our eyes. Um, so I come to you just grateful for your hard work and recognize that is not easy to do what you do. I don't desire to do what you do, I don't desire to be in that hot seat, but I do come to you humbly asking you to really think about what you've done to this community specifically. And again, I know Ian White is being impacted too, and I know Metcalf is being impacted too, and I know Sullivan's be- I know all these other schools are being impacted, and I don't want us to sound selfish or like we are throwing a temper tantrum, but we can only speak to what we see and what we know. So please don't hear this as a McMahon temper tantrum, please hear this as a, we are really concerned, we are really upset, our building is more than just a building, we are a community of people, and we care so, so deeply about the people in that building, and every student that comes through our door is ours, but to lose an administration and to lose so much of our community, you're leaving us as a shell, and we are scared and hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Bullock.
Stay up there, sorry.
No.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So, public comment is now closed, we have no further. Um, no one else has signed up, nor have I received any, any other public comment, um, through email. So with that being said, um, I'm not sure if people are aware of how public comment goes, but there is no dialogue between the school committee and the public comment, we continue moving along with the agenda, and then you will hear the presentation of whatever, um, agenda item that you came to, to give public comment on, and then that's when the school committee has their discussion on it. So with that said, we're gonna go ahead and move along with communications and reports, and we're gonna start with student reports. Gonna go first. Mr. Kennedy?
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, hello, everyone, my name is Adam Kennedy, I'm the Dean Campus Student Representative, and I'm in the Health Assisting Program, and I have a few, can everyone hear me? I just, you, yeah, usually I can, yeah, there you go. Um, okay, on the vocational side of things, Health Assisting is hosting a blood pressure clinic. Uh, how it works is staff members make appointments. Sorry, uh, staff members make appointments, and then they go to Health Assisting, and they get their, um, vitals taken, they get their blood pressure taken, uh, height, weight, all that stuff, and it essentially kind of prepares the juniors and seniors for, you know, just kind of make sure they can do everything correctly, and gives them more skills time. Um, yes, and it is, uh, it is still open to staff members of Dean Campus. A Girls in Trade event happened on Thursday, November 17th, in our gymnasium. We had, uh, Westfield, Putnam, and Smith, just to name a few, uh, attend the event, and Natalie Cologne, one of our 11th graders from the Electrical Shop, was actually one of the Masters of Ceremonies. Tomorrow is our Career Exploration Speakers Bureau. Right now, we have thirty-one professionals from various walks of life coming in to talk to us about professional opportunities, some of them are even Dean graduates, which makes, which makes for a, uh, nice connection. I apologize, everyone, I'm kind of just all over the place tonight. Uh, everyone knows it is still obvious, it is still obviously hard to find workers, including teachers and staff, but we have filled several key positions, including Dean of Operations and Office Manager. New courses offered to juniors and seniors are Marketing and Entrepreneurship, Yearbook, Journalism, and Spanish. It has been a while since Dean has had electives. The Yearbook class is currently documenting changes of Dean in the last thirty-two years through vocational programming, electives, academic courses, and school-wide events using the yearbooks from those years. On student life and culture, we have, we had student elections as our new advisor was appointed, and she is changing up what student government is looking like. Dean recently donated six, sixty not, non-perishable items to Margaret's Bakery in South Hadley on Friday, November 18th. This is one of the ways Dean is giving back to the community through their student government. We are, we will be hosting our Winter Pep Rally on December 23rd, our new elected officials of government will be inaugurated into office, thank, thanking our fall athletes and introducing our wi- winter athletes, as well as having student-friendly competition. Uh, these students are very much looking forward to a break from classes. Uh, any questions? And again, apologize, my microphone's acting up a little bit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Santos?
Hi, my name is Jake Lee Santos, I am a student representative of Holyoke High School North Campus. So for Term One students who had perfect attendance, we celebrated them with a special breakfast. We are hosting a You Can Be Anything You Want Career Exploration Day, and about thirty community partners are coming in to talk to ninth and 10th graders such as Holyoke Medical Center and Holyoke Gas and Electric. We are also having 11th and 12th graders participate in Academy Day Rotation to explore the three different academies before pep rally. Tomorrow, we are hosting pep rally, celebrating fall sports, spirit court, having cheerleaders and choir perform, and so much more. For Term One Honorable Students, we will, they'll be recognized with a special treat in the cafeteria after Thanksgiving. Charlie and the Chocolate Factory production was a big success, uh, it was amazing, I watched. We also had a Massachusetts College Acceptance Celebration for two days, on day one only. We had seventy-seven students, one hundred twenty-one applications, ninety-one acceptance, and a total scholarship amount of one million, one hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. We also had ten students qualify for the All Western Mass Choir Competition. We had the Unified Basketball Team, they had a great season and won both of their jamboree games, they played amazing, I went to one of their games. Also, Spirit Week has been a huge success, ranging from Blanket Day to Red Carpet Day to College Gear and Jersey Day, and for tomorrow, we will be representing our class colors. Just have to say, seniors are wearing white. And lastly, eighth grader, eighth grade visits will start on December 12th, and HHS will be going to eighth grades to introduce what HHS has to offer. Also, we are ha- hosting a Drive Student Government, and, um, according to Mass Hire and everything, Holyoke High is offering internships for students, and as of right now, I am a senior, however, I am interning at Holyoke Medical Center in MedSurg, so they're offering great opportunities for students. Thank you.
Excellent. That's excellent. Anybody have any questions? Oh, now you do, right? That was like a true delay. Okay, Ms. Wilson.
Just quick question, quick question. Sorry. How does the internship work, um, you know, with, uh, Holyoke Medical Center, you there?
So what ends up happening is they give you a whole bunch of paperwork, you have a work, um, work like report and everything, so they start saying, okay, what type of job are you interested in? Me, I'm like, I wanna go in the medical field, I wanna do everything medical, so, but there's also different things, so there's marketing, there's different opportunities in different branches of career, and they're giving you a foot inside the door, so if it's something you really wanna pursue. So for me, it was more like I did all the paperwork, and then we had orientation, they explained everything about the hospital, they showed us all of our departments, and what ended up happening is, the day after, we started working, and you can do different things, you can range from just being secretary at the desk to answering some call bells, of course, you can't touch the patient, however, you're like, I haven't memorized, I'm like, I'm Jake Lee Santos, I'm an intern here, um, is there anything I can assist you with? Bedding, food, I'm very organized, but yes. I'm very organized, but yes.
That's awesome. And you wanna be a neurosurgeon? You should go straight to nursing.
Yes.
You'd be awesome. Any other questions?
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, and we're happy to have the both of you here, um, representing each, you, Mr. Kennedy with the Dean Campus, and you, Ms. Santos with the Holyoke High School North Campus. Thank you. We greatly appreciate it. And so now we move to the meat of the meeting, and that goes to the Superintendent Receiver Reports, Rezone Phase Two Update. And I just wanna say, I'm sorry, I put this in front of, um, I gave one of these to all of you. Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Brunel, I did put one on your, on your side. Um, and what it is, it's um, for acronyms that you're gonna be seeing on the slides, and for you to better understand what those acronyms stand for and what are the services um, that they, that fall into the acronym.
Sure, come up. That'd be great. I'm just having Aaron come up. So thank you, everybody, for uh, uh, for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update on our rezoning efforts. I will say, this is probably the longest presentation that I've ever had, but I wanna, like, the intent of providing over 200 slides to you is, is really to give an update to you, um, and to show what a thorough process we went through to get to where we're at and to talk about some next steps. I will, I'm not going to go through every single slide because everyone had an opportunity to see it upfront, and we have all of this information available on our website. So I, I, I hope not to go through all 200 slides, but I wanna make sure you have this information and that the community knows um, what, what the process was, uh, and, and where we're at, um, and some next steps. So, uh, that was the intent, so.
So, we're, because of the depth of it, I personally am not recommending that we wait till the end of the presentation to ask a question for clarification or anything. But do not get ahead of it. So like, stick to where we're at and let's not ask a question that we already know might be coming up later, okay? Thank you.
All right, so, this is the agenda here, so we, we're gonna talk about the why, uh, we're gonna talk about the process itself, uh, some guideposts for the decision-making, so the guidelines that were established by the task force. We'll go into some of the Phase One announcements and the rationale behind them, and then Phase Two announcements and, and recommendations of that ultimately. And we'll just open it up for discussion, and then a, a large port, or, uh, a portion of the presentation is just for information, um, and you having it in your packet. Well first, um, why I care and why rezone. First and foremost, I'm, I'm a Holyoker and I love this community. Some of you know I moved away, uh, to Boston and, and I got homesick. I, I, there was something in the water in Holyoke that got me to come back. I remember um, just not feeling like Boston was my home and I needed to come back home. My life, I owe everything about my life. I feel like my experiences as an HPS student is, is what shaped who I am today. Um, another why that I have is my, my son. I have a fifth grader, um, he's 10 years old, and I know he's watching me. And just like my mom passed on to me, one of the, one of the greatest things about my mom is that she showed me empathy. She showed me what it is to have empathy and to care about kids. I was just, I was one of 13 in a household at one point, nine of which were foster kids, and two of, two, uh, my, my grandmother, for example, adopted uh, two kids that are, you know, they were younger than me, but they were my uncles, both figure. Uh, but I really appreciate, I really appreciate just how my mom modeled having empathy for kids and caring for all kids, and it, it's, it's my reason. I think about myself and some of my foster brothers, um, who I love dearly. Some of them, you know, one of them in particular comes to mind, Carlos De La Rosa. He was a, a student athlete, you know, his, didn't have a, a, a great upbringing, didn't have a, a real, a true family when he came into our house. Um, and even when he moved on to college, he lived in my house, like my house, not my mom's house, he lived with me and my wife. And I just loved him so much, but he got a lot of connections at school that many of my other uh, foster brothers did not get. I think about my brother, my own brother, blood brother, same mother, same family, and he didn't even make it to Holyoke High School. He did not get there, and his life is just a lot, despite everything that we went through, sometimes sleeping in the same bed, and I'm not trying to build this picture of a terrible life, cuz he didn't have it, he didn't have a terrible life. But what he didn't have that I had was connections in school. People, I felt like people cared for me when I was in school. My brother didn't have the luxury of having that, and that was, I believe, what changed the trajectory of his life and what changed the tra, trajectory of mine. And this is why we need to do this work, cuz we need to really build instructional designs that are consistent and making sure that, that all students feel like school is a place where they belong. So I just wanted to, to name that as, as the why. We do have a, a video here. I'm not gonna share the video. This is the same video that we shared at School Committee the first meeting. Um, anybody who's interested in, in knowing why there's a lot of individuals, the mayor participated in this, Sasha Malut, uh, Steve Mogell, a lot of different people participated in this, and what's going on with the, uh? I'm not playing this video, if that's, hopefully, that's not what you're doing.
Hi, I'm Anthony Soto, Superintendent of Holyoke Public Schools and a proud graduate of HPS. When I was a student here back in the eighties and nineties, HPS was organized into distinct elementary and middle schools.
Yes.
But then in the early 2000s, our schools were reorganized.
I don't know why I was screaming in that video, but apparently, um, I thought, I thought I had to scream into the microphone. So, I wanna just talk, like, some of the things you'll see in that video, and I wanna reiterate, I've heard so many things, like, I've heard we're, we're just doing this to balance demographics, I've heard we're just doing this because we care about the dual language program. I've heard a lot of things, but I want, I want to reiterate with the community why we're doing this. We are doing this cuz we know that in our current design, we're not able to meet all of our students' needs academically and socially emotionally. Rezoning is gonna allow us to design schools tailored to elementary or middle school grades. We'll be able to staff each grade with a complete team of teachers, collaborate together. Talked about inclusion and part of my strategic plan. We wanna build uh, teacher teams where, where the special ed teacher and the ELL teacher and the general ed teacher all work collaboratively to meet students' needs. We know that this is gonna expand learning opportunities, um, more opportunities for inclusion, for uh, some of our special education programming and dual language and varied enrichment opportunities. I just talked about my son, um, he has four specials. Every week, he goes to four different specials. Our students are not experiencing that right now in every school. And I think all of our students should be able to experience that. This plan's gonna allow us to fill our elementary school buses with elementary kids. One of the things that I heard seven years ago, six years ago, when we first came, I was in charge of transportation at the time, I can't tell you how many calls I've got around why is my kindergartner riding the bus with these eighth grade, eighth graders? It's not fair, they're exposed to, you know, middle school things, um, our lunch menus even. Right now, we're trying to, you know, our lunch menus aren't age-appropriate, and when we move to this model, we'll be able, students in middle school will be able to have lunch menus that are tailored to them, portion sizes that are tailored to them. And that's just one of, uh, that's just many of, of the benefits of moving to this, uh, this new model. And then we, lastly, we know that we'll be able to dedicate more resources to instruction and not operations. Over the years, been slowly doing this, and what it's done is it's created a lot of smaller schools across the district that are competing for the same resources. Uh, one of our schools, for example, has 126 kids. Um, most of our schools are not even at 50% capacity. So, um, we, th, this move isn't something that we just did on a whim, this is something that's been in the works for the last uh, six years, and this is us finally completing it and creating a plan for the next three years and a plan for when we get the new middle school, 2026. Um, this is our vision for the future. You can see here that, uh, where we were at in the fall of '21, we had 11 schools with nine different grade configurations in our pre-K to eight. Student, many schools under-enrolled, um, different staffing structures and different support structures depending on what school you went to. And for next year, what our plan is, we wanna have nine schools, six of them elementary schools, and temporarily three middle schools. Um, and, and the great, elementary will be pre-K to five, and uh, middle school will be six to eight. And then hopefully in the fall of '26, uh, when we get a brand-new middle school, we'll be able to go down to eight schools, um, and, and have uh, two middle schools. One of them would be Sullivan and one of them would be a brand-new PEC. Um, that's our, our desire, that's our hope. Uh, the mayor is gonna make that happen. No pressure. Sorry, this little clicker. Why so many changes at one? I don't think so, Aaron, thank you. So, uh, moving to separate elementary and middle schools is, is, like I said, a response to feedback that we got a long time ago, back in 2015, uh, right before I had joined. I think that almost every meeting that Dr. Zright was a part of, uh, there was a strong desire to move in this, in this direction, and we've taken a gradual approach to that over time. So we, um, it's resulted in, in many small schools, like I said, in too few students in each grade span, so a lot of our schools are just competing for the same resources, and we don't have the staffing structures and the resources to be able to support so many schools with few students and few grade spans. Um, and our students aren't getting a true middle school experience, um, especially if they're, you know, in a, uh, in a school that has uh, strained resources and very low enrollment. They're just not getting it, um, they're not getting the four specials, um, they're only getting two, you know, it's, it's either, it's gym and either music or art sometimes, and sometimes if we're lucky, they get both. But um, I heard loud and clear from our students that they want more. They want a, a school to be a fun place, and we know that, you know, we know that those programs help uh, make that happen. And then after extensive outreach in '21, um, and with the support of the middle grades collaborative study team and advisory group and cabinet, we uh, met with the school committee back in, in December, and we talked about what grades that we wanted to move towards and agreed that the fall of '23 was the year that we were gonna uh, do this. So this has been a long time coming, um, and tried really hard to communicate it, uh, but I know that, you know, no, no process is, is perfect. So, this is a quick picture of um, our outreach or, or the process itself. You can see, uh, May to June, we developed the guidelines, um, to determine which ones were important as we moved forward. Then from July to August, we looked at over 42 different scenarios, um, and just identified the best match, um. And then publicly released, uh, three scenarios for the community to, uh, to take a look at. But I think if, if there's any, anything that I can criticize me personally about this, I've had a lot of time to think about this, and there's one area where I feel I could have been clearer, um, and I have to own that. You know, I have to own the fact that despite everything that we did, we looked at 17 scenarios, um, there were 26 maps off of six scenarios, uh, we developed over 38 plans. I wish that I would have been clear with the community about the intent of the three maps, um, of the three scenarios. The intent of the three scenarios was not to say like, you either have to pick this one, that one, or that one. It was like, here are some three, here are three scenarios, what do you like about each of the scenario? We wanted to understand from the community, despite all the people that, that were a part of that planning process, the rezoning task force, it would be silly for us to think that like, we all got it right without getting in, any input from, from um, some of the community members. In Phase Two, I'm being real clear and opening up, showing you two maps. It's likely not gonna be map A or map B, it's probably gonna be a combination of both after we get all of this input from you. Phase One, we didn't, I, I didn't, I'm not, I'll take full responsibility of that. I didn't clearly articulate what the intent of showing three scenarios was. We could've went out with 100 scenarios that included everything, but as you know, when you looked at your packet, this stuff is very technical and it's hard and it's not easy and, and, and people's attention span to, to be able to digest this really, really technical stuff is, is hard. I mean, even me, I, when I had to look at 38 different plans, I was like, whoa, this is a lot. So we, you know, we wanted to narrow it down to three to really take a look and, and, and get feedback. What do you like? What do you not like? And then ultimately, I mean, if, if we got it perfect and one of the three plans was perfect, then we wouldn't have had to make any changes, but it wasn't. There were some ideas that came out throughout the process that pushed our thinking, that pushed us to create an even better plan that was reflective of input that we were hearing from families, from staff, from students, community members. Sorry. This clicker, uh, wants to work whenever it works. So Aaron, maybe, maybe it would be a good idea for you to sit up there, sorry. There it is. I'll let you know when I'm struggling, sorry. So, um, what was the extent of the outreach? I know I, I, every time I show this slide, I talk about how great the family engagement team was, and I know, um, there was even some public comment today about this not being, um, despite all of the participation that you see here, so over 1,250 participants, over 46 meetings, 710 survey respondents, um, from three different over forty-six meetings, seven hundred and ten survey respondents, um, from three different surveys. And then just, uh, an enormous amount of people at sixty different community meetings and school events. Um, there was, I've never been a part of a process that got this much input in my time in Holyoke. And I can't speak to the process when we moved to K to eight, but I've heard from people that were here. Um, there was nowhere near the amount of engagement and input and inclusivity, um, when that, when that decision was made. And again, I can't, I can't speak from personal experience because I wasn't here. But there are some people here, uh, like Ms. Courier and like Jack Lee Gashin, who were here, uh, when that transition happened. And, um, they have reiterated to me that this, like, we've never had a process where we've gotten input. And I want, I just think that's really important. Like, I know everyone approaches this from a very personal perspective. Um, how could you not? Um, if I was a parent, I want to know, how is this gonna impact my son? I'm a teacher. I'm gonna say, how is this gonna impact me? How is this gonna impact my students? How is it gonna, this gonna impact my, you know, the colleagues that I work with, the leader that I work for, the community that I poured my heart into? Of course. How could you not? I g- I understand that. But this process was more about, you know, uh, this process, I don't have that, that unfortunately, I can't look at things that way. I can't look at things from a personal perspective because I, I don't, every single student in Holyoke Public Schools, I have to look out for all the schools. I have to look out for the system and what we think. And, and I keep saying I, but I really want to say we. We didn't have the luxury as a leadership team to think that way. We had to do what we thought was best for all students and for all families. And I know, I know that that doesn't always mean that we're gonna make everyone happy and I want to acknowledge that, that I, I talked about this earlier today. There's probably two times that I cried in my entire career here at Holyoke Public Schools. Um, one of them was one year, I want to think, I want to say like two thousand and seventeen. I got, uh, the day before school started, I found out that there were four hundred students, um, hadn't been routed for, and school was starting the next day, uh, because of glitch in the system. So I worked till like fo- four forty-five in the morning to get information out to principals and, uh, went to bed for an hour, went to work. And then I, I just closed my door and I broke down like a little baby because I thought it was gonna be really bad and it turned out to be good. And then the other time was when I started hearing how this was impacting people personally. And it's hard, and, and I'm not taking it personal. I get everybody. But yeah, I, I, I love this community. I love our kids. And it, and it pains me, it saddens me to hear that this is affecting somebody, um, in a negative way. But one thing I know about our Holyoke students is that they're resilient. Our Holyoke students are gonna be fine and we need to model, um, um, we need to make sure that we're okay with some of these decisions moving forward. And make sure that we don't project some of our own fears, some of our own anxiety onto our students. Cause our kids are gonna be fine. They will persevere. They will get through this, um, despite whatever transition they're going through. And we want to know how we can ease that transition, which is part of the phase two, uh, process. And I went through a lot of these really slowly, but I promise, um, it's not gonna, not gonna go through every single slide. Um, so in, in addition to that, we had, uh, uh, groups that studied this over time, like the rezoning task force, the rezoning working group, the family engagement team, the teacher advisory group, our principals, cabinet. Uh, we did meet at school committee and talk about it every single school committee meeting. And then, um, May through November, you can see all the meetings that we've had. Three moving forward meetings, eight rezoning work groups, sixty community events. All of these different avenues for people to provide, to get information and provide input. And then, uh, May to November, you could still see some, some more outreach that we had there. Um, and I'm not gonna read them all because everybody has that in their packet and we have this available online. Uh, but the point is, is that I firmly believe that it was a, a thorough process that involved many, many, many voices. And like I said earlier, there, there, if there's one thing I can criticize is, but I feel I could have been a little clearer on, which was what's the intent of showing these three maps? Um, and the only thing I can do is say, you know what, phase two, not gonna make that same mistake. So I'm gonna let the community know what these two maps are and why, what the purpose of only showing two maps are. And let them know that it's likely not gonna be one or the other. It's gonna be a combination of both. Um, our guidepost for decision making, um, I just want to name, uh, we, we all know what our vision is, what our mission is. Um, and I think, uh, the, the core belief that, that really drove this process is the first one, uh, bottom left here, that students are at the center of everything that we do. Students are at the center of everything that. I want to lean in on two equity commitments that come to mind as we went through this process. That's what this is about. It's about making sure that students, families and staff get the support that they need to be successful. Um, and as evidenced by what you've seen in, in the slides, we really, really tried to incorporate the voices of those impacted. Um, and, and I can tell you, like, mainly with a commitment to include those that have excluded in the past. Uh, I'm happy to say, I know it, it, it may not seem like a lot to people in this room, but for the first time ever, we, we've had, uh, translators and interpreters at every meeting. And usually they come and they're not needed, but they come and maybe one headset gets out. Our fir- our meeting at Holyoke High, we had twelve headsets out. And, and that brought joy to me. I wish it was more, but I can't sit here and tell you like that I've ever seen that, that level of engagement where families that don't even know English were showing up and they were providing input. Um, that's important and we need to make sure that every, we live out this commitment and try our best to hear from, from, uh, people that have, uh, traditionally not been heard in the past. Uh, many of you know this, uh, the, the, these are all our, our guidelines that the task force put together. So as we make decisions, um, what are the things that are most important, very important and important? You can't, some of these are competing with each other. So, you know, and, um, having neighborhood schools, uh, probably competes with balancing demographics across all of our schools, especially in the middle, right? And, um, you know, minimizing transportation costs, uh, may compete with, with another thing. So like the, the point of this was to get together and figure out what, what are the guidelines for our rezoning? And what's most important to everyone? And we use these guidelines to rank every scenario that we looked at. The big questions that we, um, you could go, move to the next slide. The big questions that were a part of, of phase one is, uh, which schools are gonna be middle schools? And then, uh, where is dual language programming gonna be? Where is special education programming gonna be? And where is pre-K programming gonna be? Um, some of these were chunked out where we, we really engaged. Um, even throughout phase one, we did engage through the process and ask some of those questions. But, um, you know, we didn't announce where special education and pre-K programming were gonna be as part of phase one. We, uh, we, we knew that that was gonna be a part of phase two announcements. So, um, this is, uh, this is very much what I had, uh, said earlier, like, uh, we had three scenarios out there and the purpose was to get a mix of different scenarios to get to, to see what people, um, what pe- what trade-offs people were gonna be making. And we listened to a lot of input about, uh, special education and pre-co, pre-K program, programming. Um, but we also knew that, um, capacity is an issue. Some of our schools are bigger, some of our schools are smaller. So maybe able to split more pre-K classrooms in some of our schools purely based on size. Uh, Metcalf, for example, only has, despite not being, it's gonna be a middle school next year, but it only has fourteen classrooms. While Dunnehugh, Kelly and Sullivan have thirty-three classrooms. So there's just, have to take all that into consideration when determining where programming is and how many pre-K classrooms you can offer. Um, and please, if at any point anybody has any questions, just jump right in and stop me because I'll keep going. Um. Yeah, don't jump right in, raise your hand. And Mildred will call on you. So the first question that we looked at is which, which, um, which schools are, are best suited for middle schools? And ultimately PEC is best suited, a, a brand new PEC? Way better suited than the old PEC that we have, um, and then Sullivan. So temporarily, um, like we said, anybody that's zoned for PEC, we're gonna have to split that up between Metcalf and, and STEM. Um, these slides are really intended to show you, uh, the survey results. So the purple here is, um, Sullivan. You could see first choice, last choice. Um, if you just look at the purple, you can see what people's first choice was. And we've broken down the survey by different demographics. So I'm gonna slowly go through these slides. You can see the next one. Next one is all stakeholders. So you can see it's broken, broken out. Sullivan is, um, Sullivan is still purple. But you can see, you know, a hundred and sixteen staff members, um, twenty-one community members and seventy-nine students and family members. But in, in every demographic, you can see that Sullivan was the top choice. And when you look at it across, uh, racial demographic, that's also the trend. You can see that there's more purple in the Hispanic or Latino. There's more purple in the category of white. And then there's, uh, slightly more purple in the category of non-white, non-Hispanic. So that was the survey respondents. And then when you look at the groups that studied this over time, our rezoning task force, our family engagement team, the teacher advisory group, principals and cabinet, overwhelmingly, the, uh, the recommendation was Sullivan. Some more than others, you know, um, I think our lowest group is sixty-four percent, um, which was the principals. But a hundred percent of the leadership team, seventy percent of tag, eighty percent of our fam- uh, family engagement team and ninety percent of the rezoning task force, uh, liked Sullivan as the middle school option. And ultimately that was the decision that we made, um, Sullivan to be a middle school. Kelly and Dunnehugh will remain elementary schools and dual language would be full at Ian White, partial at Kelly, and then Sullivan would be, um, a partial middle school. And you can see along the left are elementary schools and what we're, what our middle schools are gonna be temporarily plus what they're gonna be in twenty twenty-six. Um, and you can see here, uh, that in order to, in order to stay true to our commitments, we had to make some changes, which included the feeder patterns. Um, and this is ultimately what we ended up with. We couldn't just switch a particular program and it not have an impact on our demographic, on our transportation, on all those guidelines that we looked at. We had to tweak the feeder pattern in order for this scenario to work, which was, which included, uh, all of the, um, the, the feedback that we had gotten throughout the process. This is what the, uh, maps look like in, in that scenario initially. And as far as the rationale goes for why Sullivan was the best middle school, there were three factors. The location, the facility itself, and the fact that it was a top-rated scenario evaluated, evaluated against all of our rezoning guidelines.
Can we go back to the previous map?
Sure.
So when we talk about the feeder pattern, right, I, I was looking at this and, um, kind of reflects off of those two maps, right?
One is, um, elementary on the left, one on the right.
Okay, but the feeder schools going into, uh, middle school, it's already broken down that way on that map. And on, on, and on what you're, you're putting out there.
Yes, if you look at the previous slide.
Right.
That's the feeder pattern.
So if we're saying right now that we're bringing two maps, get feedback, right? But it's not to say it's A map or B map. It could be a combination of two and we shouldn't be providing where those feeder schools are coming from. Because then that's also going to adjust the transportation cost. So I wouldn't even be putting out there what the feeders, what feeder schools are going into what middle school. Because that's where the confusion then comes. Because you're already doing the, the grain. So if you, if you look right now, if you look at the blue, the blue was Sullivan, correct? Yes, blue Sullivan. If you go back to your feeder schools in there, they're already in that area. McMahon's in that area. Ian White's in that area. Kelly School's in that area. The orange, it's already Dunnehugh, Lawrence and Morgan. So then don't bother asking for feedback. We've already got it. If that's what we're saying the feeder school is.
So that, the feeder pattern isn't gonna change.
But then, so then our, our transportation cannot go up.
So like this isn't the three maps that we, this isn't the two maps that we went, that we are looking back on. When you look at, uh, and we'll get to that part of the presentation, um, or that left-hand side, you have two different maps. Say like, okay, what do you like about, uh, this map? Which includes all of these different components going to Kelly. So I'll, I'll, I'll use this as a classic example. If you look at that, uh, those two components right there, that, that the cursor is on.
The Morgan and Kelly?
That divider is Cabot Street, right? We have one map that has those kids left of Cabot Street going to Kelly and one map that has those kids going to Morgan. Right now there's zone, zone for Kelly. But, um, there's a second map that we have on the table that shows that little slice left of Cabot Street going to Morgan, which is the closer school, like, um, so what, we, we showed that, that was something that when I looked at the map, I was like, ooh, I really like that. Like, you mean kids left of Cabot Street would, would be able to go to Morgan again? Because I know that, that Jackie had mentioned to me that when we did that, a lot of the, uh, a lot of the South Holyoke families were upset that, that those kids, although they live in South Holyoke, they're gonna be going to Kelly, which is in the flats instead of going to Morgan where all their friends are.
Right, which one of the concerns was also them crossing the railroad track.
Right.
To make it there quicker.
Right.
Versus taking the long walking route to it.
So that's exactly it. Like, here's two maps. What do you like? I mentioned, you know what, I really like in this map that those students left of Cabot Street can go to Morgan again. Um, and be in school where their, you know, where their friends are, where their neighbors are.
So then it's safer to say then that the feeder map for the middle school will technically be that map. But now you want to get input for the elementary aspect. Is that what we're saying? Or you're still looking at for both?
Um, do you want to just go into my, oh, sorry, Aaron?
Yeah. Which three elementary schools, um, going into which middle school is not changing? But like those neighborhood components change, like the little boxes could change for elementary or middle school. It's mostly the same, especially at the middle school level, but, um, that Cabot Street example is
But, um, that Cabot Street example is terrific because in this map, uh, kids by Cabot Street, um, are going to Sullivan because they're in blue. But in the map two that we put out publicly, they, they're going to Morgan, which then turns them into beige. Um, and then they're going to PEC.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Wilson.
So I'm gonna be really honest, I'm confused. Cause you're saying this is a proposed map, but then you're saying that you're gonna have a different proposal later on. So when I look at this map on the left, is this the map it's going to be? Or is this one of the versions?
No, this is the, so when we announced that Sullivan was gonna be the middle school, this was the map tied to that, tied to that decision. But then we were really clear with the, with anybody who has been a part of this process that the second phase of this is to draw these boundaries and get input on like these specific segments. What do people like, what do people not like? So that then we can create a map that's inclusive of feedback. But we had to, we had to provide something. And this was the first crack at it, like, if, if this was, um, if Sullivan's the, the school based on, and here's another thing that I need to clarify is that when we did this, we used, uh, last year's enrollment, because that's what we had at the time. Um, we do have declining enrollment and it affected some of our numbers and projected like grade spans and all that stuff. Um, so it, you know, it did impact some decisions that we had to make during the phase two, uh, process. But this right now is not, it's not the final map. It's like, here's what a map could look like, given that Sullivan scenario. But in phase two, we want to hear what everybody thinks.
So maybe we could retitle it.
Yes.
So it's not confusing, like initially proposed map.
Okay.
Or something along those lines where people are realizing that this is not necessarily the final, or, you know what I mean? I'm just saying.
That's great feedback.
I'm just saying that maybe somehow we could title it differently, so we know that this was like, you know, ideas from, you know, so, just something different. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, Mr. Romero.
Um, can I just get some street names added to the maps? I think it'll help everybody out.
Yeah, I'll do even better. Uh, we have an interactive map that we can share with you, where you can go in and I'd be happy to sit down with you and show you how to work it, because it is.
That's awesome.
But you can like zoom into the street, you can zoom in, you can type in an address and it'll show you where it is on this map. Because I get it, it's hard to see.
Well, well, just because my personal experience, when I seen the map, I thought the split came in Appleton Street.
Yeah.
So Appleton, from one side of Appleton to the other side of Flats, from the other side of Appleton, South Holyoke. Which is how everybody in the flats kind of splits South Holyoke and the flats. Like, if you're on one side of Appleton.
The bridge.
If you're, if you're past Ebenezer's, the temple, you're South Holyoke. If you're on the other side, you're in the flats. I think, I don't know, I, I, that's where I thought the split was, not in Cabot.
Yep, and we didn't, we, we didn't have that interactive map during the phase one conversations. It was our technical experts, so like we had it. It's not something that the public had access to. So in phase two, we were able to sit down with people, anybody that showed up and like sit down with them and say, give me your address. Let me type and, and show them, um, exactly. So we can per- a hundred percent provide you with that interactive map, um.
Yeah, not only me, I mean, the public as well, right? All right, cool, there's schools out there for everybody.
Is there a?
There's a, there, for weeks, there's already been a link to the interactive map on the website and a tutorial because it's hard, you know, it, you know, it's not intuitive just to click on it and know exactly what you're looking at. So, um, that information's been out there since November first, at least.
Yeah. And anybody having trouble, like, and, and that needs support with that, like, please reach out. Um, you know, reach out to Sam Garcia or Aaron Linville. Um, or, uh, and, and like, we can, we can certainly sit down and support, uh, the use of that interactive map.
Thank you, Mr. Romero, Ms. Tensley Williams.
Mr. Soto, so could we safely say that this is a non-conclusion of phase two? In other words, it's not complete yet.
Oh, yeah, we're, so tonight is not about, tonight is an update on where we're at in the process. We, we are committing to announcing everything that we committed to. I want to say by December second, which is the last week of November. So we told everybody, phase two, we're gonna be announcing at the end of November. Um, so the way the calendar works, like December second is when, when we plan on announcing final. I will say, some of the feedback that we got in phase two was like, if you have decisions already made, like, and we didn't have them already made. We were still working through a lot, but like I heard loud and clear from a lot of, uh, uh, in our, in one of our community meetings, that there was a lot of anxiety around special ed programming and where it's going. So we worked around the clock that night and we said, look, let, the community wants to know this. It's creating a lot of anxiety, so like, let's make some final decisions and let's put it out there. Let's not wait till December second. So, um, we, like, that's another thing that I want to say about the process is we're listening. You know, at that community meeting, that despite how, how difficult, um, some of the conversations went, we heard a lot of great feedback. You know, i- i- informed, um, us making a tweak to what we had initially thought, which was around the, the supported inclusion program. Um, there were some families there that said, so you're telling me that all of my McMahon students that are in middle school would be able to go, they're gonna be traveling together to another school, uh, except if they're in the SIP program? But we said, wait a minute, let's look at that. That's a great point. That is not fair. So let's take that feedback and let's incorporate it into the decision we made. Which ultimately meant like, yes, if you're McMahon, you're traveling together. But even if you are in the supported inclusion program, you're gonna be going with your peers to where the, the, wherever that. I just think that's so important because listening.
So December second is the conclusion of the matter, okay? That's.
December second is when we'll, all the decisions that we said we were gonna make in phase two, um, we'll, we'll be announcing them. So we just announced special, where special ed programming and pre K, I believe, is gonna be, right? We, we announced that, uh, about a week ago. And then, um, last week, we announced where leadership teams were gonna be. So these were all things we planned on announcing at the end of phase two. But as we're concluding on some decisions, we're sharing it because we know that there's a lot of angst and, and just anxiety around the unknown. And there's still a huge, you know, December fifteenth is when we plan on, you know, letting staff, impacted staff know where their assignment is. So even now, like even after December second, when we make the announcement, there's still gonna be a group of people that are waiting for the final, like, okay, where, you know, what, what, what is the assignment? And that's coming in December. The best thing that I can do is commit to, if we make decisions sooner, we're gonna commit to, to, uh, letting people know what those decisions are. And, and, um, you know, we hope, we hope that we can meet all of our targets and, and make these decisions as quickly as possible. But I will say, you know, we're, we're, we're truly committed to listening and, and, and have shown that by the input that we're getting is, is forming some of the decisions that we've had to make about this process.
Do you need to call on me, Mildred? Not really, unless you're just commenting back, right? Because you're not gonna ask us anything?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to clarify that this proposed map that's on the screen, like, the school committee is the only group that saw just one map at our retreat. Um, and so once we went public, we had two maps labeled map one and map two. So this is what, this is what is called map one in the original thing. And we made a commitment to try to put forward choice for families, but also make sure we only put to, for families and staff. All, we also wanted to make sure we only put forward choices that we believed would be good. We didn't want to put forward a choice that we're like, that, that one's kind of crummy. So both map one and map two were good choices with differences and still obviously not representative of all the differences. Um, and we'll, um, app G O's on, we'll get to explaining that once we get to that section.
Ms. Rivera Cologne?
I have, um, kind of like as I'm hearing everything and having heard feedback from different families in the area, thinking about the fact that I feel that in our community, based on the feedback that from the different meetings and stuff like that, that there's, there has been an equity issue. And I think that at this time, and I know that this is not gonna be a popular thing to say or do, but I think that at this point, we're at a right time to make an equity pause and be able to really try and call people, people in. And what I mean by this is that even for our one thousand two hundred and fifty participants, that is not, well, it is a good number in terms of what has happened in Holyoke before. However, it's not a number to be proud of, especially because we're calling it participants. If one person went to all forty-six meetings, that person was counted forty-six times. Which is not necessarily the most transparent way of showing how many people have actually input their voice in the process. Many parents in different schools have not heard about the changes yet. And that doesn't mean that you haven't done your best in terms of trying to reach out. But for example, for phase two, and I'm saying that now because we have a chance to still be able to include voices. For phase two is almost like we didn't learn because the survey was open for a shorter amount of time. So if we're trying to engage more stakeholders, having a shorter amount of time, I don't know how many ways where people given this information, I'm in the roster as a community partner as well. So I received one email with the survey. If I have missed that email, maybe I wouldn't have been able to give input. If that wasn't an email to a parent who may have been really busy, they may not have seen that and they may have missed their chance of voicing their concerns. So having at least maybe one meeting, potentially two, if that would be the, the best, right? Because if you missed one. But to have informational meetings at the schools where they know what changes apply to them particularly, rather than being bombarded with all of the changes that are gonna happen at once. Because that way they'll know, okay, these are the things that are gonna be happening to my kids. These are the things that are gonna affect us in terms of transportation, where are we going? And being informed not only from their community, having an opportunity to be able to talk to you, having an opportunity to talk to their leaders, because that, those have changed too. They're gonna have different people that they're gonna be talking to and they need a chance to be able to learn and understand that as well. So I, I really urge to think about having a short equity pause, being able to give this information, give the parents a chance to be able to learn this before you move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Collmar.
Doctor, when you come out with another map, describe on the map, safety issues that brought up all these issues. But, and what you did to correct, because this is one of the major things that public wants to know and the parents want to know. Boss walked, uh, different, different roads within the city or anywhere else that are safety issues to our, for our students coming and going. Think something just absorb in there, son, what you tried to do to correct.
Thanks, Mr. Collmar.
All right, so we can move to that next slide, Mary Ann, which, uh, the, the one right after that. So what we heard from a lot, uh, throughout the process around the location, um, based on the, the survey and people we talked to, the location itself, uh, was much more popular. Um, people liked that, that Sullivan was centrally located. There were some people that liked Kelly, um, uh, Kelly as a, as a option. And not many people really brought up Dunnehugh as, as, um, you know, their leading choice. Uh, that's just, uh, from a location and geographical standpoint. Uh, most people favored Sullivan based on, based on its location for middle school, uh, from. And the other piece that talked about in terms of reasons why, why Sullivan, a lot of people talked about the facility itself. Um, you know, Sullivan recently just got brand new windows and doors. Um, there's some green space there, um, and there's thirty-three like large classrooms there. So people liked how spacious it was and unlike Dunnehugh and Kelly that, um, have a lot of classrooms or hallways that are separated by dividers, um, people didn't like that. They liked that Sullivan had actual walls and, um, it still appear a lot of stuff, but not as much as through those dividers. It's almost like there's not even a wall there, um, between classrooms at Kelly, that long hallway at Dunnehugh that, it does, they don't really have walls, they just have a divider. A lot of people talked about that. Um, and they liked the physical layout. We had many, uh, many families, uh, walk, especially, uh, at that phase two meeting, we had some families that walked school and, and saw that, you know, it had a library, saw that it had a gym, like, things like that, people really liked about, about Sullivan itself. And then the third thing on the next slide is about, uh, uh, you'll see in, in upcoming slides. And when we looked at it at the retreat, Sullivan was a top-rated scenario when you, uh, compare it to all the guidelines that were established as part of the rezoning task force. What's important, what's most important and, um, so that, that's, that's what that one's about. And the other thing in, around phase two was, uh, the dual language placement. You'd see the second question is if Sullivan is a middle school, which school should be partial dual language and full dual language, Ian White or Kelly? And why? And which middle school should be partial dual language and why? That was, uh, a part of, a lot of, a part of the feedback that we had gotten throughout the process as well. Um, and just an import, important point that we want to make is that, you know, um, throughout this process, we didn't decrease the amount of opportunities for dual language. And I think, um, you know, in fact, it's, it's equal or better to what we've had in prior years. So, um, there's still gonna be that open enrollment process for citywide seats. There's still gonna be, uh, two, two full classrooms at, at Kelly. Um, then there'll be opportunities for two full classrooms in the Ian White neighborhood as well. Um, uh, in addition to the, the citywide. So, uh, that's an important point to make. And the other thing I want to say, and I want to name it about dual language itself, is, is that this program is designed to serve, you know, some of our, uh, uh, some of our media's population, some of our students that have been historically, you know, marginalized in our ELL population, uh, that's really, it's, it's not just about, you know, uh, English dominant speaking families learning Spanish. That is a great asset about the program, I'm not gonna deny that. But it's also about some of our newcomers and some of our students that come to Holyoke that don't speak any English, having a program that can help accelerate their learning. And you don't hear that enough, only hear about English dominant speaking families wanting to learn Spanish. Like, this program is really made up of a third of, of each, you know, kids, third of, if, if designed well, a, a third of the kids will be English dominant, a third of the kids will be bilingual, and then a third of the kids will be, um, Spanish dominant speakers. Um, and that's really, you know, you look at our data across entire history of data being recorded. That is a group of students that have traditionally, uh, been marginalized and, and aren't really accessing, um, rigorous content. And we feel that this program is really designed to serve them. And we need to do a better. And we feel that this program really designed to serve them and we need to do a better job messaging that.
Mayor Garcia.
I just wanted to make a comment on that front because I, I, I think we do have to give credit where it's due. I recall, uh, a certain superintendent who visited this, came to this district and introduced that program, Superintendent Pias. And here I am now hearing that this is one of the greatest things the school district has currently. And so I know, you know, we've, we've kind of transitioned over and put the, you know, whatever happened in the past and we're moving forward. I also want to also give credit and recognize to former Superintendent Pias for introducing this when he started as superintendent. And here we are now speaking very positive about it and trying to expand it. So I just wanted to kind of make that note. And thank you to the current administration also for continuing that and prioritizing it. Because every point you're making right on, right now is right on point.
Ms. Rivera Cullen?
One thing that I also want to add about that, that is so important is that it is an asset for all the students. It is an asset for the family, but it's also a social justice issue, right? Like being able to speak your language when you're learning, to be able to really solidify those concepts is really important. So it's not just a great program just because of the language, but it's also based on the culture and everything else that comes with it. So it's a social justice issue. So thank you.
And, and Jadi, I just want to respond to, um, your comment about pausing part of, part of the Phase Two crunch. We heard a lot during Phase One, like, um, part of the Phase Two crunch is really, talked about anxiety, right? Staff, like, they want, they want us to make decisions. They want us to know what's happening and we got to start planning. And my only, I, I think it's a great suggestion. I just want to, like, be aware that very challenging at, uh, to lay, not start planning for next year. It could hinder us to really get off, could start next year. And I do recognize, I had a staff, had a, uh, staff member that got a letter and said, I didn't even know this happened. Like, that's, um, that's the reality. I could sit here and tell you, I'm living, breathing, speaking, sleeping, having nightmares about rezoning. And it's like, we're, we're doing everything we can. It's tough to hear when a teacher says, why did I get this letter? I didn't know this happened. That's hard. I don't. Wish I had an answer for that, but I want you to be aware that, uh, part of it is, is really needing to let families know and needing to, uh, let staff know and, and jumping right into.
Mr. Wallhand.
Thank you. Doesn't matter when I spoke. Um, yeah, I know we've had a lot of discussion, you know, tonight and for the last month on the project, you know, it's just, you know, um, it's a lot to, uh, take in at once. Okay. So I, I, I emphasize that, you know, the, the problem is we've kicked the can down the road on this for over a decade. Okay. Uh, you know, the K to eight model has been a disaster, okay, from, from day one, okay? Acknowledged that. Kicked the can down the road for a decade, not six months, not a year, a decade. Here we are. Okay. So I'm not saying I'm blaming anyone, but this is where we are. Doctor's right to the same thing. Okay. He had the same concerns four, five, six years ago. Here we are trying to make everything equal. Okay. It's not, it's not a perfect plan. Nothing's perfect in the world, right? Nothing is. Okay. So we're, we're just trying to go with what the data is today. Again, the data today is not the data that would have been there 10 years ago. Dual language program wasn't even in existence 10 years ago, correct? So all these add-ons that we've had over the last decade, keep going back to a decade, that we're trying to absorb in, into today's world, today's model. Okay. The demographics have changed, attendance has changed, the numbers of students has changed again from the last decade. So we're trying to make this change today. So there's just going to be massive changes. I emphasize with the families, teachers, administration, all, all the players. So I'm just trying to say, you know, um, trying to do our best here. I, I have all the respect for everyone's involvement in the process. And, um, there's going to be growing pains. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
And then, uh, some decisions that we had to grapple with around the dual language program itself. There were three main reasons that we had to grapple with this. Some were programmatic. Some were preference and choice from what we heard. And then making sure that, um, created, evaluated each scenario against the rezoning guidelines. So from the programmatic perspective, the advantages to Ian White being all dual language is mainly that it, it, um, it's already has a fully flushed dual language program. So there, it already serves grades, uh, pre-K to five in dual language. Whereas Kelly really only goes up to second grade because Kelly got a late start. So moving, uh, the dual language students from that are, that we have a full dual language school at Metcalf and a full, not full, but like a, a much more, uh, veteran program at Ian White. The students in grades three, four, and five will have a much richer experience, um, and, and for grade spans as opposed to taking them and putting them at Kelly where, where they would just be by themselves. They're not, Kelly hasn't grown, thanks, up to, uh, second grade right now. And then the drawback was space, you know, Kelly has more space, larger building than Ian White. So that was a drawback, um, some of the program decisions that we had to make. And then choice and preference, um, you know, this is, uh, you know, dual, while dual language is, is more challenging to operate as, uh, you know, as a, as a split, a partial model, you know, where we have, you know, two dual language classrooms and one, uh, strand SEI classroom, that's harder to operate as a principle, right? You have to design professional development that's specific to dual language, but also take into consideration your, your SEI classrooms. Um, and there were some advantages to Ian White being all dual language. So some of the drawbacks that we saw is that students in that strand classroom in the Ian White, um, English only classrooms at Ian White would be zoned to another school. So that was a tough, that was a, a tough, you know, decision point. But I also want to, you know, I want to say that I've heard, and, and I don't want to offend anybody here, please. So like, heard like that this decision was made just to make the white people happy, um, of, uh, in our dual language program. And I, I just want to reiterate that Metcalf is about, uh, seventy-nine percent non-white. People talk about it as like, oh, it's the white, you know, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm paraphrasing. This is what people have accused of, of thinking. But that dual language program is seventy-nine percent non-white. But I just, you know, we don't talk about that. Yes, at Kelly in the Kelly neighborhood, you know, we're at about ninety-five percent, ninety-four, not, but, but to say that it's, you know, an all-white school or anything like that, it's just, it's really not the case. District wide, we are at about eighty percent, um, Hispanic. And I think that's an important point to make because I've heard so often, this is just about families or, or those families. And I don't, you know, I want to clarify that, um, what, what demographics are in that program. And then lastly, the, the top rated scenario, so was, was really the, sort of the reason. I want to move on to scenarios M three, P two, and P one. I'm, I'm going to skim through this. So the next slide, after, once, uh, Sullivan decision was, once the Sullivan decision was made, we, we took a look at all of the feedback that we got. Um, and you can see a lot of the detailed analysis, um, at the, in the appendix. And, and later on, uh, you can see the, the detailed analysis that went into it. But we looked at, okay, Sullivan's a middle school. This is what, uh, we heard from the community. Now what, uh, based on all this feedback that we heard, what could we do? Um, and created an M three, a P two, and a Q one demographic. And then took a look at those scenarios to, to look at the demographics, to look at the programming implications and model it against all of our rezoning guidelines. And you could see that on the next slide, that's what that is. So we have the HPS today. You can see all the red around designing schools that prioritize the students' needs first and, uh, money spent on instruction, all the way down to minimizing transportation costs. You can see HPS today is the column to the left. There's a lot of red there. Our current portfolio is not designed to, uh, favor some of the guidelines that we set forward in, in the, um, in the rezoning guidelines. And, and to look at the Dunnehue option, the Kelly option, and then the Sullivan original option, and the two revisions that we made, you can see with that, the last one that we chose, which was revision number two, um, which involved changing the, um, changing the feeder pattern and switching where the full dual language hat, partial dual language goes, was a top rated scenario. Um, and if anybody has any questions on like why or, or what, what do these different numbers mean? We'd be happy to elaborate. There's a 90-minute video, there's a video that we have online, um, that we go into greater depth, uh, but, but that, that's just, you know, I wanted to share this because every decision that we made, made sure to look at how it tied back to the rezoning guidelines that we established upfront.
Ms. Rivera Cullen?
I just want to say, Ed, if anything, for anybody watching, looking at HPS today compared to the new revision, first of all, yes, Mr. Soto messed up. And, and even through the other slides, calling it the top rated scenario may have been a mistake. But this were revisions made to that plan because he didn't have all the answers. So he sought feedback from people so that they, then the best decision could be done. If you look through all the things that were put together for the guidelines, each one of them is better than what we have today. And the worst one of them all, the minimize the impact on families, will eventually go away because everybody will be set in their set schools and they'll know their friends, they'll know their teachers, will know the leadership. And yes, the process was far from perfect. But for the people who were able to make their voices heard, they were heard. And those changes were taken into consideration and made the revision better. Because the more voices we have on the table, the better we can do for our community. So thank you to all the people who put their grain of sand into this project and also to all the parents and all the community members who were able to take the time to be able to lend their voice. Now we just have to get more voices on the table. Thank you.
So that, that really summarized like the next bunch of slides that we're going to go through. So I'm just going to tab through, we'll show that one. That was scenario M three, which was the original, uh, which was the original Sullivan. See what the map was going to be, ratings were, and there's explanations on each. And then what the capacity analysis is on the next slide, the percent of English learners, the percent of special ed, uh, education economically disadvantaged, and then the total number of students in each of those grades. And we've put together these, these slides for each one of those scenarios. So I'm just going to keep tabbing through, right? The next one. So that's, uh, yep, you'd see it's broken down by racial demographic. You'd see it's broken down by elementary and middle school. And another slide that we have on here is how in this scenario, how many students are eligible for busing based on our current transportation criteria? Then, um, then goes the next scenario, which was P two, uh, and not changing any of the feeder patterns, but simply changing the partial and full language programs. See, in this scenario, tab through, you'd see the same things, right? What, the evaluation criteria, the capacity, all the breakout of the student demographic. And this slide right here shows the average number of home rooms that we would have based on this scenario. Travel distances and eligibility for busing. And then you could see in this scenario that sixty-two percent of students, um, going to a different school. So this is to show that even when we select the Sullivan scenario, looked at incorporated feedback and, and create, and looked at three different options and looked at all of these different factors to then decide like, what do we think based on what we heard is the best scenario to move forward with?
Superintendent, can I chime in on something?
Of course.
Thanks. So the M three was what was, um, presented publicly in Phase One. And then what Anthony just went through on, on the P two, which was the best of the next scenarios, was just switching out the location of the dual language programming, which was full and which was partial. And we were really disappointed, honestly, when looking at it because of the impact it had on demographics. I would have thought, you know, had I not looked at the data, I would have thought that that change wouldn't be, um, that great. But it really like, that, that's a case where if you would have incorporated, if we would have incorporated feedback and put one and one together, it was worse. It, we're getting a worse option. So then we had to go back to the drawing board with this scenario Q. And we really were trying to understand like, what about how the maps are drawn and the feeder pattern is making it more, like less equitable? And that's how we came up with scenario Q, which is why that felt like new to people. And then, so then Q one is what we talked with you all at, at the school committee retreat. And then this slide shows like the things that had to change, um, to, to get back to a better, um, um, balance of demographics. And so that's why from, that's why it couldn't just be a small change from what was presented. That's why the, the small revision wasn't okay and we had to go with the bigger revision. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, thank you, Erin.
Or Ed.
And we clarify also the programming, um, by what we have here. This is where I was getting a bit confused with what was submitted in the packet. Then what I see there, so if we're looking at McMahon, we're looking at not applicable. When I look here, it says SIP. Um, and the reason why I mention is because if you're mentioning it for everybody else, why wouldn't you mention it for them?
Yes. Sorry about that. So we, these slides were from mid-October and late, mid, late October. So that shows like we weren't, we had not intended to keep, um, SIP at McMahon. But then we went into the November first, November eighth meetings and got such strong feedback on that. Then, then we incorporated. So a little bit of this is hard, like people like, could say like, oh, your slides are changing, but it's this iterative process or we're learning and changing and adding over time. Which is why, like, this shows our best thinking a month ago. But the, the full Q scenario, which are, um, which, um, App GO will present, reflects all the current data with school year twenty-two, twenty-three data and all the sped and pre-K programs that we announced.
Another one of these towards the end. I'm going to be very honest. I didn't go all the way to the end. And I thank God that you're not going through two hundred and nine of them. Um, and I thank God that you're not going through 209 of them. Um, so, all right, I'll wait. I shouldn't have went ahead of myself. But then again, I wouldn't have wanted you to go back to slide 45.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I, that's a really great question because I, it just shows that it's such a process that we're incorporating input on, um, and it just, and these slides were really intended for us to perseverate all of, over them with you all, but so that you had the information and you could see, uh, if someone, what was requested, that we give all this information. So we put it all in there. So you have it all. And the result is 200 slides.
And part of it is like chronologically letting you know, like, here's where we started. And as I'm going through this presentation is like, this isn't like the, you know, Q one isn't the final. This was about a month ago before we had that, that final, that phase two rezoning meeting where we got feedback. This is, this is why I was trying to say earlier, like, this is all great feedback. As hard as that was for me, I, I got, we got some great feedback. We incorporated some changes that really make sense for students and for families. Um, and this is an example of one of them. We were saying, okay, McMahon's gonna go, McMahon Gen Ed is gonna go somewhere, but there's not gonna be a SIP program there. So, and we heard that's not fair. And we said, wait a minute, how many students are we talking about? Why can't we do that? And we, we changed that because we're listening.
Erin Garcia?
Was it, is there more to the presentation?
Yes.
There's a whole lot more.
If Superintendent, if people are getting antsy, honestly, all the way up till 83,
Yeah.
these 40 slides just show the depth of analysis on just three options, which is three out of 38 that we looked at. Um, but if we're interest, it feels like there's interest in kind of, okay, so what are you guys looking at in phase two? We could skip ahead to slide 84.
Yeah, I, so like, I do wanna do that, but before we do that, I wanna, because one of our, uh, school committee members asked to see the demographic data. So I wanna go to slide 78. Okay, so.
I guess the issue is, is because since we've been talking about chosen, chosen, I saw a lot of chosen. So, yeah, I, I may not have gone past 90. Who knows? I don't know, because I kept scrolling down, but there's another map. That'll be great.
So this was the, the student demographic, um, slide. Uh, it's on, you know, page 78, here, uh, page 78 in the slide deck that's in your packet. Um, and these numbers represent the, when we, when we show a demographic. So here is white, here is Hispanic, and here is Ecodis, which is the short for economically disadvantaged. Um, the number that you see there, uh, and we break it out, elementary and middle, is the difference between the highest percentage and the lowest percentage school. So you can see in that, that first box, which is now our highest percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged and compared to the school that has the lowest percentage, the difference is seven in our middle schools. In Hispanic, the highest percentage versus the lowest percentage, the difference is 11. And the intent of this slide is to show you how that compares to M three, which is the original Sullivan, P two, which was the, the, the minor tweak without, and then ultimately Q one that, uh, changed the feeder pattern. And, and you could see that the difference in our middle schools especially is because families had pri, had expressed that elementary schools having access to their kindergarten, to their child who's in kindergarten, having access to the school in their neighborhood is important. And that they're okay with putting their 12-year-old on a bus to send them to middle school. But like, please don't do that to my kindergartner. I don't have transportation. I don't have easy access to the school. I need that. So like, um, in our middle schools especially, it was important to really, uh, fix that, uh, 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 balance, not fix that, but balance that demographic. You could see in Q one, um, the, the, the differences between both middle schools is really low, about one, zero and one. And now we'll go, and then you could see the, the same breakout for, uh, our English language learners and, uh, special education, uh, demographics. See, in the middle schools, the difference is seven. And when you get all the way down to, uh, scenario Q, um, the, the, our schools are more balanced in the demographics that we're showing. So I just wanted, you guys have that in your packet, and I wanted to show you how to interpret this slide. Uh, you said slide 84, Erin? Okay. Wanna give me a, a, a quick break?
Yes, sure.
All right.
As Anthony mentioned, in phase two, where we had a lot of things to get feedback on, so I'm looking at page 86. And one of the key questions is where is special education programming? And there were many factors driving our decisions here. Um, top is promoting inclusion when possible for students. A big deal was offering continuity of programming, and that, that means a lot of different things. It means from, you know, from pre-K to elementary in an ABL program. If we can keep you in the same school, we, we want to, rather than have it spread that ABL pre-K over many different, um, schools. Um, from elementary to middle school, we'd like to keep you, if possible, like if you're in the, if you're in the RISE program in elementary school at Kelly, we'd like you to be able to go to the same middle school with those peers. That doesn't always work, but we're, we want to do that as much as possible. And then also within a school, it was really important to have ABL and SIP. The initial thinking of why we just were gonna have ABL and SIP at Dunnehugh and Morgan was so that students, if their needs, if they were a SIP student and their needs became greater and they needed to be in the ABL program, the program would be right there for them. Or if you were in ABL and you could kind of notch down a level, SIP, the SIP programming would be right there for you. That was our initial hypothesis with it. But then, as we talked about, um, to, to reduce the amount of transition for students, we did expand the SIP locations to include both McMahon and Metcalf. Um, a third important decision was, um, balancing the percent of students with disabilities across schools so that we could best meet the needs of all students in this school, especially students with disabilities. And when possible, we tried to keep programs in current location in order to limit, um, students' transition, leverage, uh, staff expertise and, um, utilize some of the existing spaces that, um, suit the program needs. Um, programs like Shine, for example, have a lot of additional requirements, um, for space. So we, we have leading, all along, we've had leading hypotheses with where the special education program could go. You couldn't do all that analysis without it. But we wanted to listen to people, uh, we, um, throughout the process to really fine tune on it. So we were making decision, or we were fine tuning decisions all the way up to like November 7th. We got a ton of feedback on November 8th, like, please share already if you have it. And so in order to turn that around and translate it, then we shared it literally two days later on November 10th, um, which was before a CPAC meeting. So that's an example of how we were trying to be, um, responsive. Um, and so here's, um, on the, on here, and then also, um, we'll make sure that it's linked in the phase two announcement and on the website are the locations of the special education programming. Um, every school will still offer special education services. Um, but sometimes in a student's IP, there's a, there's a specific program that, uh, that they are, that with the parent and the staff, they agree to go to. And so those will be located in these areas. Um, and then I, um, a lot of people have been wondering the depth of how we made decisions for o, other ones. And I think the best, there's like four or five slides on, on this. Um, I think the best would be to, rather than go through them all, would be direct people to the website. But it was, it was really, the specifics go back to those four driving factors for why, um, location decisions were made. Um, and then people might also ask, um, on slide 94 now, at Ian White, why doesn't Ian White have any sub-separate special education programs? One is due to limited space. Um, it's the only school that's gonna have an estimated four home rooms per grade. Um, but also inclusion opportunities for students in sub-separate programs is more challenging when, um, when you're limiting, when there's two languages being taught, there's less opportunities for inclusion. Um, also really importantly, um, for years now, Metcalf has been the default, kind of the default location if, if families want it to, um, for students who are newcomers. And that will then transition over to Ian White. So the percentage of students who are English learners is, will be higher at Ian White. And, you know, we're never gonna have perfect balance across everywhere, but we did try to look at a school that has a higher percentage of, um, uh, students with disabilities. If possible, we're trying to have a lower percentage of students who are multilingual learners or vice versa to just balance the overall demographics of the school to, um, to best meet the needs of the students. And then our fourth, on page 95, our fourth question is where's pre-K, pre-K programming located? Pre-K programming is avail, is allocated based on space av, available in the building. And as I mentioned, when possible, for similar, similar programming. So the ABL pre-K programs are gonna be at Morgan and Dunnehugh because that's where the ABL K to five programming is. We wa, wanted to spread, um, pre-K out through the city. This has been feedback that we've received over many years and we just wanted to double check it in the phase two survey. Um, and specifically looked at Ian White and McMahon where space is tightest. Do people still want to at least have one pre-K program there, even if it maybe meant that like a health special had to travel? And, um, very much so, people were like, thought it was important to have a presence of pre-K on every school. And I do really wanna say, this came through loud and clear in the staff meetings. Our pre-K teachers rightfully feel like, rightfully feel like there's been a lot of change to pre-K over the years as we've, especially as you grow dual language or, or switch one school from an elementary school to a middle school. Pre-K students have, and, and the teachers have very much been impacted. Probably the teachers more so since you're only a pre-K student for one or two years. But to teachers, their community has changed a lot. And we really tried to be planful with our capacity building and kind of the mapping out of programs so that I know there's change this year, um, but that we're really, really trying to, um, plan for more stability for pre-K teachers over time. Um, there's not an even distribution of pre-K across the city. Kelly and, um, Dunnehugh are the largest buildings. They're gonna have six classes of pre-K. McMahon and Ian White are the, are gonna be the tightest space. They're only gonna have one. And then like Lawrence is gonna have four. And I think Morgan's gonna have three. So we tried to spread it out where possible. Um, the, the next, the next, uh, slides just show that in red, it, um, um, I, we, I pulled out the survey for just people at Ian White and McMahon, like, and it matched what, or wait, no, this is overall, overall, almost half said it's the most important to have one pre-K at Ian White and McMahon. Some thought, no, um, they would, for every enrichment, have their own classroom and some weren't sure. Um, but then when we looked on slide 97 to the, um, specifics, when we pulled out just Ian White and McMahon data, most felt like, yep, you should offer pre-K. And on slide 98, that was true across stakeholder group. Um, on slide 99, it shows it was, uh, true across race and ethnicity. And so then on slide 100, which was released on November 10th, it shows where the pre-K programs are. Um, we have, we tried to do a balance of full day and half day. When possible, we tried not to switch locations. Um, and we're, we tried really hard for that program continuity. So like, you know, dual language pre-K is at Kelly and Ian White. ABL is at Morgan, um, and Dunnehugh, for example. Um, and then on slide 101, um, to 103, for folks who really aren't interested, we went into the rationale specifically why every program was specifically chosen for that school. I really appreciate my colleagues in special education and pre-K, um, team because it really was, uh, Anne Mary Ann include, including, like, we really put our, we went through a lot of different versions. And I feel, I feel like this one kind of balanced all the needs the best possible. And I appreciated it. It wasn't just one person working on this. It, it was really a team that came up with a good solution. And on slide 104, um, just to kind of set the stage, we publicly shared maps one and two. Um, and then we've looked at both survey feedback and the, um, feedback um, from the meetings and just kind of continued on our own analysis. Um, and so right now, what, um, Priya from, our technical consultant from AppGeo will walk us through is three different maps that we're looking at for scenario Q.
Thank you, Erin, um, Anthony. Uh, I just wanna say right at upfront that, um, uh, this has been a really difficult process and having, uh, this team working on this has just been incredible. The attention to the detail and to what makes sense and where it should go has been, you know, very, very thoughtful. So I just wanted to share with the community that that, you know, working with, um, this community has been very eye-opening for, for us as a team and, um, very rewarding, I think, to some extent as well. Um, so I'll just go through what, um, uh, you know, we ended up with in, in the scenario Q and also highlight that this has been an iterative process. Uh, when we started, we were looking at which middle schools. So we had to build maps for that. And then, you know, plans for each of them. And then, um, and then, you know, the second stage, second phase, um, also looking at the changed data. So we switched to the, um, uh, school year 22, 23 data. And then there were all of these other, uh, factors that were taken into consideration for this, um, for this phase. So let's move on to, um, I don't know, Erin, if you want to highlight any of these, these things. But, you know, SIP locations were needed to be expanded, function and rise were moved from the initial thinking of Sullivan, Sullivan to Metcalf. So all of this had to be taken into consideration when building these, these scenarios for, for Q. Um, so the first one.
Priya, one thing I wanna mention that's really important. If you were to compare like the scenario Q data that we looked at before to what we're looking at now, not everything is gonna be a perfect match because at this point, we had school year 22, 23 data. And the AppGeo team was able to do a refresh with this year's data. I think it's really, we lost 176 K to eight students just in the past year. Um, 500 over the past five years or so. So that did impact what the, the data looks like for this year, and it was important to use the best data possible.
Right. So, yeah, that's, that's really key. So you will notice differences, uh, in this deck also from the beginning. You know, whenever any numbers were shared for previous, uh, plans and these, these plans because we updated it with the 22, 23 data. Okay, uh, the next slide is, um, is basically, you know, you've seen this, what the breakdown is. And now you can see on this slide that McMahon actually has SIP, which has been updated. So, um, if you've been seeing this, what is the, what are the feeder patterns? McMahon, Ian White, um, and Kelly going to Sullivan and Lawrence Dunnehugh, Morgan going to, uh, to New Peck. So that's the breakdown. Um, I, I, I don't know if, going into the, um, survey responses, um, again, this was shared out with everybody, uh, the next few slides give you the breakdown of what people thought of these maps. Uh, there was, you know, clearly, uh, somewhat of a, a preference for MAP two, but it wasn't very clear and a lot of people were not sure what they liked. Um, the next slide, uh, but then you can see that there is definitely a, a preference for, for MAP two. Um, and again, uh, the not sure clearly is a lot, but, uh, MAP two was a preference over MAP one, even when it was a breakdown by stakeholders, by grade association, and similarly by race ethnicity as well. Uh, the, the differences were pretty clear. So here's your, your plan one, which again, you've seen all of, um, West, uh, Holyoke goes to McMahon. And, uh, you have, uh, Kelly, uh, you know, which is a little more compact. You have all of that central part of, uh, of Holyoke going to Dunnehugh. And then you can see the hatch line is where it will be the, uh, the dual language for Ian White. But any of the trans students in this case would the dual language for Ian White, but any of the strand students in this case would actually be going to or, you know, the students are not taking dual language, we're going to Dunahue. So you can see that color underneath the hatch line showing you that what what would happen in this scenario. All of that little central area, which is yellow, is Lawrence and and you can see where where Morgan is. And then that then translates to the middle school map, which is all of the blue. So Kelly, Ian White and McMahon going to Sullivan and the rest of the, I mean, Dunahue, Lawrence and Morgan going to to Peck. So that is what, you know, we've been talking about the first plan that was shared. All of these are on that interactive map. So, you know, you can take your time going into the details and looking at it. So let's look at the breakdown of the numbers in the next few slides. You can see that, you know, what the, what the capacity, the demographics and and the breakdown of all these numbers are. The capacity breakdown is fine, you know, that's what the the thing about this is you have to look at all these different metrics. Let's look at the next slide. So in this one, I think the general feeling was that that you have preferred fewer students at Lawrence and more at McMahon and Morgan if possible. So it's like you can, you have to keep looking at this and seeing which components can we move around to make that that, you know, tweak the map a little bit to make that happen. So and then let's look at the next slide. It's the in the middle school, again, the new PEC is a little too high relative to Sullivan. So that would have, you know, is there any way that we can tweak that a little bit? And, you know, you saw that even from the from the response, people preferred, you know, map two to this one. So that's, you can see that when we, when I show you the next slides. So the next slide is the racial demographics, you know, they seem, they seem.
Priya, can you pause for, Priya, can you pause for a moment?
Sure.
So something that I was noticing when you went to the chosen before and now even looking at this one, when we're talking about the new middle school. Hopefully, the new middle school, if I'm not mistaken, the capacity was for five hundred and fifty students. Now we're looking at an overage right now. This next scenario of an extra fifty six students. So.
Which is why that plan one of scenario Q, that was one of the drawbacks. It's like, wait a minute. That map doesn't really work because that would put way too many kids at one school and not enough kids at another school. How ultimately we went through and and did that like, so the the intent is to look at like, if we made these minor tweaks to these components of the map. What's it going to do to our demographic? What's it going to do to total enrollment?
Are there a hundred maps in this thing? Because this is the confusing part. So if I'm getting confused here and I'm here asking a question, which really was a dumb question because apparently you're going to have another map that's going to tell me something different. Imagine how families are feeling when you're showing up at these schools with all these things. And then it it kind of becomes long winded and they lose focus, right? And then the expectation is for them to then give their feedback, a feedback on something that they might have heard the word the and everything after that just went away. So I think I'll wait for the next map.
So I'll just, I'll just say that our community meetings, the presentation wasn't this long. Where where the presentation was limited to like, I would say twenty minutes and then there was time for feedback.
And just two maps, two.
Yeah, and it was just two maps. What we're doing today is we're trying to let you wouldn't let everybody know what an extensive process we went through and and like, yes, it's exhausting, it's overwhelming. But if if we take away anything from today, I want people to know that a lot of thinking went into what where where we are right now in this process. And we continue to have to grapple with like decisions. And ultimately, like to say like, oh, they they just made a decision for one reason. Like, no, the the decision that we made took a billion different factors and a million different things into consideration to make sure we hold true to those rezoning guidelines that we established at the beginning of this process. And right now, what Priya is going through is scenario Q. There were, there's three maps that we're looking at right now, right?
Correct.
Right. So first two were the initial ones that we got feedback on. And then the third is, okay, we heard you, you heard what you liked about these maps. Here's, here's a third map that incorporates some of that feedback. And that's, that's where we're at right now. Some of what we looked at earlier was a lot of phase one decisions before the middle school was made. All the different factors that went into the different things that we were looking at. Right now, we're at, we're in the process of like, all right, here's where we are right now in phase two. We know Sullivan's a middle school. We went to the community with two different maps and we're showing like some of the breakdowns of those two different maps and then a third one that incorporates what we what we heard. So that that make a little, that makes sense.
Absolutely. I'm going to wait till till slide two ten. And there is no slide two ten.
Yeah, it is. It's it is exhausting because you have to be able to digest all of this information. And so just like Anthony said, you know, all of this wasn't presented to the community. It was the map. And I think that's what makes it, it 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 a little more complex is for you to see that it is. It's not just lines on a map. It's also all of these numbers. It's where to put the students. What programming makes the most sense. And so all of that had to be looked at together to come up with these, these three maps. So let's, let's just move on to the to slide one eighteen where you can see the travel distances. Again, now this is fifty three percent passing eligibility. Sixty percent of the students would go to a different school. So we looked at again, all of these, you know, different metrics. And then sort of you compare, okay, what are the pros and cons of this map? And, you know, there's a whole list of them here, you know, for example, you know, keeping Lawrence and Kelly elementary school communities together. And this was heard loud and clear, you know, keep elementary schools students close to their schools. You know, it's all right to bust the middle school students, you know, what are the enrollment numbers? What is the racial breakdown? So all of those pros and cons were listed out that then we could compare it to to what came up as a second option. So now if we go to the to the second map. Now, this is a whole different map, which we are calling, which we called map two. And this is what was shared with the with the community. Here, what's happening is that part of the of that Kelly area and I I can't point, but hopefully somebody can point that hatched area, all of that. You know, becomes the dual language at Ian White. But part of it, if they're not in dual language, would go to Kelly and then the other part would go to McMahon. That's the way the changes were. And then you can see that little component in the center of town, which which has been switched to McMahon because that was Sullivan before. So we figured, let's try that out and it wouldn't be going to Dunahue, which is what was in in the first plan. So you can see that tweaks and because, you know, we thought, okay, let's put some more students in Kelly. So then we had to take students from, you know, a little more for the west and move them into Kelly. And then how do we reduce Lawrence? So we reduced, you know, Lawrence and put some of those Lawrence students into Dunahue. So it really is a a process of permutations and combinations and seeing how link these components to different schools would affect the numbers, affect the students, affect the programming. And this is what came up with with plan three. And you can see what happens with the middle schools again. Kelly and all of that area with Ian White and McMahon going to Sullivan and then the center with Dunahue, Lawrence and Morgan going to to New Peck. But now you can see that center one, which was that whole area was Sullivan before it will, you know, continue going to Sullivan. So the sort of it's, you know, the students will continue in that same school. So let's look at the numbers for this one. So you can see what the the capacity numbers look like and that that seems fine. But then when you look at the the next slide, when you look at the average homerooms, you can see that we sort of prefer more students at Dunahue and Morgan and McMahon. Now Kelly has too many. So now you have Kelly with, you know, three point one average homeroom. So so this is what happens is when you move a whole bunch into Kelly, the the numbers go up.
And I just want to reiterate, Priya, like, this is why I did not like this map. Is because you have Kelly School and Ian White School, both schools with that houses dual language program. One of the reasons we talked about rezoning is because we have small grade spans in each school and we can't really create teacher teams and low enrollment. In this map, we had really high enrollment at Kelly, really high enrollment at Ian White. And then everywhere else, it was like two, two homerooms per grade, which goes against a lot of what we talked about and why we were rezoning. So this is an example, this slide right here is an example of why we didn't really like this second map that was proposed. Because when you add current enrollment, that's what you come up with. So we had to make tweaks to say, wait a minute. We can't have four homerooms at Ian White, three at Kelly and then everywhere else gets two like that that defeats some of one of, some of the like concepts around building teacher teams and having more students per grade span. It it defeats the purpose. So that's, this is the main reason why this second map of scenario Q. We said, wait a minute, this doesn't really look good. This doesn't work and we got to come out with the third one.
And then the same thing happens with in the next slide. If you look at the middle school breakdown, now as a result of those changes, the the new PEC enrollment is is sort of low. It's, you know, it's much lower than than would be desired, would be desired. So, you know, another reason for trying to tweak this a little bit. The racial demographics, you can see those numbers. Again, the travel distance and impacted students don't change significantly, but you know, a little bit more than the previous map. And so now you have these, this is what was presented to the community as for feedback. And so we, you know, all the feedback was sort of digested. Again, the next slide shows you what the pros and cons were. You know, sort of discussed them as we were sharing the maps with you about the the balance in enrollment, the, you know, which school has more and needs more. And then also what happens to the dual language families. So, you know, listing out all these pros and cons and taking in the feedback, we came up with with plan with a with a yet another plan. And this is what is map three. And in this map, we have all of that Ian White area going to McMahon. And of course, this is the students that are not in dual language. And then Kelly is is shrunk a little bit because, you know, those numbers are very high. You know, the the sliver that Anthony likes a lot to talk about is in Morgan as, you know, which which makes sense that closer to Morgan. We did, you see that little green area in the middle, which is is actually because of homeless populations, there is a shelter there. So to sort of balance that a little bit, we moved that into Dunahue. So all of these tweaks were made with, you know, sort of taking the feedback on or what was wrong with one and two is this is sort of the, you know, the map that is that makes sense and deals with a lot of the issues of one and two. So let's take a look at the numbers for this and then we can get people's reactions. So you can see the capacity breakdown is fine while McMahon and Ian White capacities are higher than others.
Priya, one second, please. You have a question.
Yeah, I can't save questions then.
Ms. Wilson, do you want to not wait for the next map?
I am not waiting.
Okay.
Not waiting. So I guess as the board seven representative, while I support Ian White, you know, becoming the dual language, you're having families travel across the city in order to go, in order to drop their, what term do you use? Strand students off. And so part of me feels not pleased with that, to say the least, as some families, I'm sure are feeling that same way about transportation. When you talk about transportation, you talk about families staying close to their home school and they have to travel basically across this, well, across the city for their elementary school student who is in a English traditional program. And yet I recognize that students are traveling now, but to a central location for Metcalfe, for that full, you know, dual language location. And I think I would be remiss to say that a lot of parents are not going to be pleased due to the travel that is going to be required for one student who might be in the dual language program. And then there are students who's in, you know, this a strand, you know, program, a regular traditional English taught program going across the city. So I I I just needed to say that as the ward seven representative.
Yeah, and that is, that, you know, on slide one hundred and twenty, no, I don't know what slide it was. But that is a drawback of of full dual language being at Ian White. We named that. We named that as like these other cons. I will say those students will be eligible for busing based on the criteria of our transportation policy. So, you know, and and I don't, I'm, please. Sometimes I feel like when I'm responding, it sounds like I'm being defensive. I'm really trying to answer your question. I'm listening. I hear you. And what I, when you say a family having to go drop their kid off, like, there will be an option for for them to just walk them to the bus stop and then get on a bus. And I will say it's not, it's not unique to Ward seven. I bet you every Sullivan family that lives in Golden Village and lives in Jarvis Heights is, you're not hearing from them.
Right, I'm not.
But they're in the same scenario. They're going to be getting bussed because.
They're getting bussed to McMahon, which is closer to them.
To McMahon.
Yeah, I mean, the difference is probably a five minute bus, like five minute difference. I mean, you you know, from from the Ian White neighborhood, you hop right onto the highway and then you're you're right there, you know, Dunahue. And again, I please, like, I'm trying to listen and then respond. I'm not trying to respond to be dismissive in any way. But I will say, yes, that is a drawback. And Sullivan is 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 Sullivan families are in that same boat. So are, you know, McMahon middle school families, right, that have traditionally been, some families have been able to walk, you know, to McMahon. And now they won't have that option in this scenario. So that's, that's, it's hard. It's, that is definitely a drawback for sure.
So but if you look at the next slide and and look at the average homerooms, we're sort of, you know, reaching our ideal breakdown of what the average homerooms would be for each school. Balancing out, you know, keeping Lawrence a little low. Dunahue and Kelly sort of be on, you know, on par. And similarly, you know, McMahon and Morgan would be a little bit more. So that's, you know, those are the key things. Now, if you look at the next slide, similarly with the middle schools, the enrollment split looks very good long term. You have the seventy seven, seventy one split, you know, now new PEC is a little little more than it was in in map two, a little more balanced with Sullivan. And I think there's a few more students to try to fit into Metcalfe and STEM in the short run that we prefer and but still be manageable. So that's the, that's the middle school breakdown. The demographics is the next slide. Again, you know, we've been looking at these same numbers. The busing eligibility. The busing eligibility is also comparable it's fifty four percent and then. Uh about sixty one percent of students would go to a different school. So you know this was the this was the plan that was uh. Taking into consideration some of the negatives of one and two. No plan is going to make everybody happy this is this the way it is with redistricting. And I hear you know Anthony trying to respond to you the but you know. There's there's some metrics that you have to look at and all of the you know everything taken into consideration the pros on this definitely. Outweigh some of the cons and uh this was the this is sort of the preferred scenario currently but um I think. Uh you know feedback is definitely still welcome. And I don't know if um Erin you wanna highlight any of the pros or cons or Anthony but um they're all listed out here.
I I don't think that's necessary I feel like I you know the the biggest pro to this third map. Was was really being able to do what we set out to do initially was which was increase. Um increase the um grade spans in some of our schools and and balance our our middle school demographic. Um so that it's not just happening at Kelly and it's not just happening at Ian White that all of our schools will have. An opportunity to create grade level teams that help support the need the our students. And and meet their needs both academically and socially uh we we believe that. While we went out with the two maps for feedback this third one really gets at some of the feedback that we heard. And gets at um. A lot of why we were zoning in the first place. And uh uh it holds true to to being higher rated. Against the um the rezoning guidelines that we had discussed. It so like there's there's a few more slides but it's all about demographic information. Um in in a a across three different maps so um. That information is is really dense but you can see in map one what the demographics were what map two what the demographics are. And map three um but we really like I think this is a good time to. To pause and answer any questions as the the next portion of it is really is really quick just analyzing. Um you know some of the phase two survey results you know we asked about upgrades to schools and things like that um. So we can briefly share that or we can pause and answer any questions if feel like.
I think the next slide would be good to pull up as well for the three maps side by side so you can see them I know it's really small but um. You get a general view of what how they compare to each other.
Ms. Tensley Williams.
Mr. Soto how many walkers do we have and do we have students walking from a lot of the schools?
Um. I think in in each of the plans we saw around sixty percent of our students eligible for busing so that would mean that. Forty roughly forty percent of our students are walkers. You know in 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 when we initially did this and that level of detail is hard to come by but I anticipate. At um about a hundred and twenty seven more students out of five thousand students that we have will be eligible for busing. So give or take so like that that's hard for me to put a real number but when we analyzed it and said okay. All of these students compared to what we have now how many of them will will beat the criteria for busing. It was around a hundred and twenty seven more students but I will say that the majority of our transportation cost. Really uh uh driven by uh services required in the IE. Um so while we we can say what people are eligible or not eligible. Uh the majority of our costs are are it doesn't matter how far away you live. Services that are required as part of a.
Thank you. No other questions. Mr. Colomar.
I I mean right now I anticipate that if if a hundred and twenty seven more students would be eligible for busing. We can we can be strategic around our school start and end times. I've been saying this throughout the process I would love for our elementary schools to start in the earlier tier. And for our secondary schools to start in the later tier but I can't hold true to that desire. If it means that it's gonna cost an extra million dollars in transportation. Like that may mean that one of our elementary schools starts on the later tier if we can save. Uh money on transportation and I know that's not like perfect but this is you know. That is one of our uh rezoning guidelines is to minimize the impact on cost of transportation. It was rated lower but it is something you know if if you talk to some of our city councilors. And if you talk to uh some of our folks that have to balance the budget and all that on the city side. That would rank high on 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 their rezoning guideline like that would be more important to them. Than some of the other guidelines that we say are important to us as a school district so. Um I it was a long way of saying like I don't have a number for you but we're gonna work really hard to. To minimize the impact on transportation costs and it may mean uh tweaking start and end times. So that we get a good balance of first tier schools and second tier schools. To be able to uh minimize the impact on the transportation budget. No other questions alright real I I think this next section Erin would be real quick around phase two survey. And you go way faster than me so I'm just gonna let you do it I talk way too much.
Nope we're one forty two. Oh yeah in this. Oh okay in the phase two survey. Um a hundred nineteen people respond we asked like what do you most wanna see in terms of upgrades? Um at Sullivan and you can see like age appropriate bathroom modifications upgraded grade level furniture. Um and main entrance security upgrades were at the top of the list. Um we have plans to everything that's like above fifty percent we have plans to address as soon as possible. And we in the announcement coming out on the um. The on December second we'll give more details but um. I will also just send the school committee um. The facilities team wrote an update on kind of what we're doing with each of these and for the interest of time I will just email you guys.
Oh my bad I was waiting for another map. Go ahead Ms. Wilson.
Quickly I just wanna make sure that we're gonna have um I don't know how to say this properly but single use bathrooms available. Um for those individuals who um do not feel comfortable either going into um like a gender neutral bathroom. I think that's really important that we have that in all the schools and I'm not sure if we do have that and that's all I'm gonna say.
Yeah the the I mean we those are things that we have to we have to factor into our planning for next year we just so and I I wanna say. Although we said Sullivan here we're also using this to to say okay what what's important to people so that. At MetCaf although we don't want to like invest heavily in it because we we're gonna get a new building and we're gonna move out of MetCaf. Um um where you know we are gonna we can't have. A bu- a a lot of our middle school students using bathrooms that were designed for pre K students right so. We're gonna have to take a lot of this that we heard for Sullivan and we're gonna have to make some changes at MetCaf to make it age appropriate. Will we be able to like you know there was some information on science labs and like all the like really want to. A new middle school building and and not invest heavily at MetCaf but make sure that it's appropriate we did a walkthrough today. To really look at those spaces and that came out wow these sinks are really low we gotta bring them up wow this toilet's really low the partitions are low like. Literally I uh in one of the bathrooms I could peek over the partition without getting on my tippy toes so we need to fix that stuff. At MetCaf too not just Sullivan. And and STEM doesn't need any upgrades because there's already a middle school here and we've already done through the gone through that process so. Our feedback for facility upgrades is really we should have said middle schools not just Sullivan we should have just said middle schools.
And I know that superintendent Soto in the facilities team is also looking carefully at Lawrence because. Adding fourth and fifth grade there and it has been really under enrolled so that's another priority for facility investments. And it's gonna stay in our portfolio on slide one hundred forty three we asked people. What special circumstances should be considered as part of the zone appeal process? And in blue it shows people who said yes you should definitely allow that and the um the oranges maybe allow it and then what you don't see is. People said you should not allow it and this was not the most extensive survey it was overrepresented by some school communities so we're not gonna read. You know where we it's an important point of consideration I'm not gonna say it rep- represents how everybody feels but at the top of the list where. For example if you're if you one of your children attends the SIP program at McMahon. Um considering that you're that their brother or sister could attend at McMahon too so that all your students all your kids and your family could be at the same school. Um another one that was really highly rated was. I hey I'm a teacher at Morgan and I'd like my kid to attend Morgan with me we drive to school together so those would be. At the top of the list to be considered for zone appeals and the zone appeal process will be released as part of. Um the phase two announcement on December second and we have gotten feedback not just on the survey but from all the meetings this fall on it. Um on slide one hundred forty four we also asked people we get we have gotten a lot of feedback. And it's a really great point hey my kid's in fourth grade now. You're asking them to go to a new school in fifth grade and then they're gonna go to a new school in sixth grade and. Um and then this kind of similar for you know for seventh grader now eighth grade to ninth grade though people um seem to focus more on their. Fourth graders um and so we asked people like we cannot do that at all schools. Sullivan's gonna be a middle school there's no fifth grade there we can't grandfather in um the fifth grade students. We could do it at some schools like McMahon Kelly Morgan a space allows so we asked people. Is that fair should we consider transitions for some schools if there's space available even if we couldn't do it for all? And as you see here fifty eight percent of the people who responded said yes you should do it for in where you can. Um as space is available um twenty seven percent so about half of that said no if it can't be done for all you shouldn't do it for anybody. And then for fifteen percent said I'm not sure. So we're looking at addressing this also through the zone appeal process we had a really rich discussion at our cabinet meeting today on it this is one of the areas that. We've gotten feedback on to how could you ease the transition for students um there could be a chance that. More students would wanna stay than there is space available and if that was the case if we move forward with that we'd have to do something. Fair like a lottery process so we are looking at it carefully.
Thank you yeah but.
Uh Ms. Mr. Wallahan.
Larger schools are gonna have more room to accommodate.
Not really because.
Right I mean McMahon's gonna have a smaller school smaller smaller classrooms.
That's a good I could see how one would I could see how someone would think that. All the schools except for Ian White are gonna have three home rooms per grade and that average home room slide shows that. We're kind of we have like on average like two point three classrooms full so there's gonna be like. That point seven is gonna be space available. Now we wouldn't want to overfill classrooms we don't wanna say yeah you can stay at McMahon but it's gonna be thirty kids per grade. Or I mean thirty kids per class we would still wanna keep that class size for fifth grade around twenty five twenty six um students tops. Because a lot of our classes right now are more are closer to twenty. This is not an easy thing and it's really I can definitely see both sides certainly. Um we've also gotten feedback we talked to teacher advisory group about this even last week and. This question came up someone asked it and then to the one person who thought we should try to grandfather in students there were two people that said. It's not fair if we can't do it for everyone and our students are more resilient than we give them credit for so I really just understand. All points of view on this and don't envy the superintendent for needing to make a decision on this. Um and so on slide one forty five I just wanted to do a quick check in with everybody on. What we from the beginning said we would announce by when and and where we're at so we completed all those phase one announcements. So you know where elementary middle schools are the school leader where dual language programming is and the process for staff reassignment. And in fact the first piece of that happened um last Friday all staff received a letter saying if they're they were impacted. Potentially impacted or not impict impacted at all and then in phase two we said we would explore these six areas more deeply. And um the biggest one that we've been talking about today is the boundary lines. Um but we also announced the SPED and pre K programming. We will also be announcing um the process and timing by which any displaced students will be assigned to a specific programs. Um students in the SIP and ABL program their families will be receiving calls as early as right after Thanksgiving about that. Um you know the zone appeal process the exact date in December when staff will be notified hey. First grade Sullivan teach you you are displaced and you are going to fill in the blank school. Um and then we'll also share out more information about those upgrades to the designated middle school so we have a. Email coming out we'll have an email um on December Friday December second which. Will have kind of a lot of links to more information for people because we'll try to explain it. In an easy to understand digestible way for people who want the thirty second version and then people who like the three hour version you can have a link. To more information. Back to you.
That's.
But go.
And that's only one more slide. Slide one forty eight what happened to two hundred and nine.
Yeah.
Rest of it is the appendix.
Oh okay. Alright well that's a nice ending are there any other questions comments? I know we've asked a lot throughout we've made comments throughout. Oh now I see it Mr. Colomar.
Not only the committee. Your committee. This is taking a long. But that's good people understand. We can't rush into these things gotta do it that's interesting for our children. And that's what first thing that came into my mind when we even started this process that. Did it in the best. And it's so important so important that we make sure it's done right not not rush into these things. Change maps here and change maps here studying the matter very carefully. And I think. Really done a wonderful job.
Thank you Mr. Colomar Ms. Tensley Williams.
I'm not sure. How many homeless uh students are involved um they fit into the scenario somewhere right?
Yeah they fit into in fact uh Priya was talking about it like um. We have to consider where some of our uh shelters are. And make sure that we make a commitment to. Allow more access to our families that are experiencing housing displacement. And as part of that process we had to make some tweak to certain components of the map because. Didn't want all of our students that are experiencing housing displacement to go to Lawrence just because. That's where all of the shelters are in that particular neighborhood so there was trade offs to make like okay. If we change this component to uh McMahon or change this component to Dunahue. Like that was one of the uh students uh them student groups that are and families that we looked at. To ensure that there's there's equity in balancing and make sure it's not just like oh that's the school where. Majority of our families that are experiencing uh housing displacement is.
Thank you. Mayor Garcia.
I I appreciate Calamor's concerns cuz I'm a big believer in my model is you get what you plan for. And uh um he's hitting the nail on the head there. On engagement and addressing change I wish I can tell folks that in a perfect world. There'd be no criticism no fears no concerns and unfortunately from what I learned in my own experiences and even now as mayor. No matter the intention. And unfortunately, from what I learned in my own experiences and even now as mayor, no matter the intention, there's always criticism, concerns, and to be blunt, that's okay. As I grow into this profession and learn in my own experiences here, I've learned a few things. Public engagement, although the most important, it's actually the very hardest thing to do in local government. But also the most important thing to do in government. It's difficult to get 100% of stakeholders in our city or in any involvement capacity that you're in to get involved in a particular process. And just as hard to make a decision that's going to make everybody happy. And although the case, it's an extremely critical part, public engagement. And so to the number two thing, leaders are tested by how they respond to navigate decisions and address those concerns. And the best way to do this is to ensure an open and transparent engagement process that's inclusive of all perspectives and stakeholders to the best possible. And so what I've witnessed to date, as it relates to decisions made to rezoning, I feel like we followed the process of good governance. Good government does what they can in an open and transparent process to get you a little bit closer, as close as you can as possible, to the best decisions that will de-escalate concerns as much as possible. And it's even better when leadership even acknowledges what they could have done better and makes a commitment to pivot in areas where they need to in order to achieve a much more effective result in that engagement process. And we heard that tonight. The rezoning change, it's a result, it was, the changes that were, that are unfolding in front of us, it's, it's a conclusion of what I saw to be a good engagement process influenced by the community at large. Which is the very reason why it makes me very comfortable with supporting decisions that are made here. Even when the best process is followed, when the most careful thinking has been done and when all voices have been heard and all feedback has been incorporated. Change is always going to bring worry, it's going to bring fear, it's going to bring cynicism. But with that said, I do want to end with, since, with this. Since 2015 and for as long as I've actively involved in this community, and even when I was serving as the Ward One School Committee rep, we've heard over and over and over and over again that our community wants separate elementary and middle schools. And I think, I think we all agree to that here. I know this as a community leader, as a father of two fifth graders, who by the way, you know, we're very happy at Metcalf. And I'm not too thrilled about the decisions made, but I understand the greater vision, the greater perspective of what we're trying to achieve here. And I know the amount of work that was put on, put into this because my wife is one of the community engagement coordinators. And I've, it's, I've heard it over and over at the table, think that they're doing things that are going on to engage the community and how we're trying to achieve that, that level of engagement. So redrawing the boundary lines is a necessary part of this effort in order to balance enrollment demographics across schools and specifically across our middle schools. And I do think we need to move forward together, united on the decisions we've made so far and continue to work collectively to make the best decisions and the most effective changes that will, that we still need to make. Because the work, from what I'm understanding, is still not done. So our job, our job today, to the extent that we can, we'll continue to review, continue to address, continue to correct any remaining concerns from both phases of the process. But be assured that there is no way to please everyone. And as we go forward, and I, and we, we heard Soto acknowledge this and folks in this room, we have to understand that engagement is extremely critical. Understand where the gaps are so that we can improve, pivot in areas where we need to so that we can improve and better close that gap. But even if we engage 100% of our community, there's still that concern. But again, we have to acknowledge that concern. We have to always try our best to be better and just continue to move forward united with the decisions that are unraveled as long as those decisions are a result of good engagement, a, a, a strong intention to try to reach out to everybody the best that you can. And that, even if I didn't agree with the process, I mean with the decision, I, and, and this happens on, as mayor in a city side, when I'm dealing with the council. Even though I, Josh Garcia, don't personally agree with a direction the community wants to go, as I'm always in support of it if it's a result of good engagement of the community at large. And I, and I truly do believe that what we're seeing here is exactly that, which is why I'm a strong supporter of the direction that we're going. I just wanted to share those comments.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Is there, oh, I'd never forget you, Ms. Tensley-Williams.
I'm not trying to embarrass her, but I just want to thank Mr. Fave. She's a wonderful vice chair. She works very hard and she, I almost feel like we're her kids, but she.
Oh damn.
Goes out of her way to help us and I really appreciate that. And I couldn't go home tonight without saying that. Thank you, Mr. Fave.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tensley-Williams. Is there anyone else? No, Ms. Brunel doesn't, okay. So for me, I know I had asked some questions and clarified and wanted a lot of clarification because that's what you're going to hear from the outside, right? So when I kept emphasizing on, you're showing me this map, but then you're telling me you're going to bring me out another map and then for the community to, you know, to give their input for them to come up with another map. And the perception is, how many different maps are you showing and to whom are you showing those maps? It doesn't become consistent. So that's kind of what, what has been going, you know, like people are hearing is that there's not consistency. It's the one, one group is hearing one thing, another group is hearing another. So thank you, because you did acknowledge that there was, you know, somewhere along the line where you could have, you know, came out and said, this is actually what I'm, what we're doing. We're trying, we're trying to give you the best scenarios, but we want to then hear your feedback and put it all together and see what would be the best, right? And that's what you're, you want to do now, moving forward. Change is hard. I'm going to be very honest, change, change is hard. Even more so for parents that have children with, in special education, right? I can speak to that. I know what transition is like for, for, for my child. Probably did, one of them did five in probably in less than one year or two years. But it's very hard. But at the same time, it's, what are the supports? So it's, it's really about educating the family because students, children, they can sense when we're anxious, when we're overwhelmed, our reactions to things. So now they, like, we're feeding that on to them and now they're reacting. What we need to know though is the reason why we're here is because of all of our students. And although that I'm one that always advocates for students with special needs because I live it, it would be wrong for me to not think of all students, right? Because that's who I'm here to represent. So is change hard? Yes. Are we going to get through this? Absolutely. We just got to take it one day at a time. And are there going to be some bumps in the road? Well then, help us by making it better with suggestions or the feedback, right? Because at the end of the day, we're trying to be the best district, right? We don't want to keep having other cities looking at us like, there's Holyoke again, they're growing up again, right? We wanted to start having positives. We do have positives, but that's not even shown. It's the, that little one thing that comes out wrong, that takes over the whole. And that's what's happening right now. This one thing is now dividing us. And rather divide us, it needs to start bringing us together, not just as, as staff, but also our kids. They need to see us standing united. That's it for me. I don't think anybody else had any comments or questions or concerns, no. So we're going to move to the next, to the next agenda item, which is new business. And these are, these are recommendations from the policy subcommittee. So what we can do is either we.
Make a motion that we take them in total?
Okay, so we have a motion to take all of the policies set forth by the policy subcommittee. So it would be policy AC, AC dash R, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. J I C K, harassment students to replace JBA students, student harassment. A C A B, sexual harassment. J H, student absences and excuses. J I C A, student dress. G C, oh my goodness, G C F, professional staff hiring. So it's to take them as a whole, as a recommendation to the superintendent to post on the website for two weeks to get public feedback. If you, if you believe, if the, if the superintendent slash receiver believes that the changes that are being recommended should be placed.
You want a motion?
She put the motion to take them as a whole for that. Is there a second?
I second it.
We have a second by Ms. Tensley-Williams. Now, is there any discussion?
So I just want to say that the recommendation on many of these policies were based upon the MASC, the Massachusetts Association for School Committee, and their recommendations based, some changes were based on federal law, some on state, and some on best practices. And that's, you know, we just took these to start our policy review because we haven't reviewed policies in, in, I think, since the start of receivership. And so, excuse me, even before that, so.
One moment, I'll, I'll clarify that. There was, there was some policy recommendations and changes that were posted while we were with Dr. Strike.
Wonderful. Thank you. So that these are just some recommendations that we made. You know, the subcommittee felt strong, you know, felt strongly about these, you know, making these updates.
There, oh, Mayor Garcia?
First of all, good job. Just to make clear for everybody and to the public that these are recommendations to the receiver, who I'm sure the receiver's got to meet and discuss with the commissioner and then get back. Just to be clear, I don't want the superintendent to think, you know, here are these policies, you got to do this, because we understand clearly that there's a separation here of, of powers based on being in receivership. But instead, what we have is the committee here reviewing this, discussing, making these suggestions. And if there is anything valuable to amend these policies and the commissioner agrees, that at that point, you know, it can be put up for public comment, let people to, you know what I mean? And then whatever feedback, the commissioner might not agree with anything, with any of it. But, you know, at least this gets us in, in that practice of a school board to review policies, just kind of making sure that we're being sharp, that our policies, that your policies, our policies, that it's sharp and, and good for the governance of the school district. So I just make that clear there for you.
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. I have a question because my, my understanding, based upon, you know, the education I received, would be that he would make, the subcommittee makes a recommendation to the school, to the entire school committee. At that time, he also would be posting it for public comment. And after the public comment, that is when he would then submit what we believe, with the public comment, should we make any changes or adjustments before we send them to the receiver, excuse me, our superintendent, so he can make the final decision.
Yeah, I mean, I think that in a traditional, traditional government where, where there isn't a receivership, that would, that would likely be the process. And I'm, I'm all on, like, I didn't see anything alarming in here, but I will say that what, what was difficult was to say, here's the existing policy and here's the changes that are being recommended. It looks like, you know, they did some work on statewide work. So it's going to be hard for me to articulate to the commissioner, like, here's our existing policy and here are the changes that are being proposed. Because, you know, I, it's just, I, I have to take it that extra step to make sure, you know, there, there is section 69 or chapter 69, the whole receivership thing that we have to consider. And I'm sure the, the, the state's Eagle team is going to want to look at proposed changes. So I want to work with Sam to figure out, like, yes, I have a clean copy of what is being proposed, but I don't know what, what are the changes. It's hard for me to track that.
So I think ours, our minutes, we haven't approved them. But once you get our minutes, I think it speaks to the rationale behind proposed changes. I think that, that would be helpful in your conversations.
And the other thing is that it's also being up to date with DESI guidelines that they've also put out when it looks at protected class.
Absolutely, thank you.
And so that's mainly what was done, was just adding the protected classes that the federal government's looking at, added the state and DESI themselves. Mr. Wallahan?
Thank you. Just, I agree with what you were saying. I mean, some of the policies are, they're based on federal law, right, federal state law. So, I mean, there's no use to having a, a public comment section on that. We're kind of stuck with, federal law is a federal law, okay? I mean, versus the policies of our specific district. You know, what do we charge for, you know, pool use, you know, what's a dress code? I think there's two sets of policies here. Some are guided by federal state law, it can't be changed, whether we're in receivership or not, okay? This is the federal law, the federal law, we have to abide by it. Our, our, our policy should, you know, assist them with what the rules are. And again, those are, laws are moving apart, right? Changes every year based upon, you know, case law, either on state level, the federal level, Supreme Court, et cetera, et cetera. So those are kind of a moving target. So some of these things should be probably due on an annual basis. But, you know, I'm not sure how we get notification of, you know, guideline to change. DESI let us know that so we can change our policies, you know?
Ms. Wilson can answer that. She, she got the answer for it.
Versus, you know, what our policies are for, for this, this district. Again, dress code versus what do we charge for the school facilities. You know, so those are the two things that I, I just think we have to be working at.
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
So I do want to say that actually dress code, there, there is a state, you know, issue with that. So it's not just our city, that we can just create this dress code policy. But speaking on a whole, I think, you know, one of the, you know, essential, I think, benefits, since I'm new to school committee and I'm, you know, the chair for the policy subcommittee, is MASC. They do put out updates and revisions on a monthly basis. And so, and, and we did get advice from Liz Fond, who is our field director. Thank you, field director, as to some of the key ones we should look at based upon the federal law, law and DESI changes. So that's what, we got some guidance from her on which ones to look at first. You know, so we do get that information through MASC. They do send notices out and they do have these, you know, general policies that we can use and adapt, you know, based upon what we see fit, as long as they fall under the guidelines required by law or statute or DESI.
So if I'm not mistaken, one of them with the dress would do with the Crown Act. That was passed.
I was just going to.
Mayor, Mayor Garcia?
Any, any opportunity to seek public input, law or not, it's always good. Because at minimum, it'll be an educational opportunity for the community. But to your point about process, you know, I'm thinking and I'm just brainstorming out loud what we should do and want to hear people. what we should do and want to hear people's thoughts. I think here, we, you know, as a body, we accept the recommendation to go forward, allow the superintendent to have that conversation with the commissioner. And if the commissioner's open, then at that point, do the public, you know, the public, um-
Comment.
Comment or whatever the case. So that way, like, if he comes back and says, which I, I highly doubt, but if he came back and says, sorry, guys, you don't have any authority over this, it's not a priority, and we're going through a public comment for no, 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 you know, we'll be just wasting time at that point. But that's just, uh, you know, my thoughts on that. I don't know if anybody feels any different.
Um, Mr. Calamore?
I go along with what the mayor thinks, but it's also operation that we're working together. We're not just, this committee, uh, making decisions that affect everyone. So it's so important that we work with the state, not fight the state all the time. And they're, they're going to recognize us too because of that, that we're trying our best to operate with them, work things out for the better.
Thank you very much, Mr. Calamore. Ms. Wilson?
The final piece I'm going to say is that it, it speaks, the, the work that our, the subcommittee is doing is speaking to the fact that we take pride as school committee members and that we are moving forward, you know, working, trying to improve our district. And that we're making, you know, the efforts to regain control and show and demonstrate that we are capable of having, you know, having that local control back.
Great, thank you. So if there's no further discussion, we would need to do a roll call vote. So is Ms. Garcia on?
I'm here.
Okay, so you, Ms. Garcia, can you go with the roll call vote, please?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Fave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel? Mr. Romero? Can you guys hear me or is, or are they not there?
He's not here.
He's not here either now.
Okay, okay. Um, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera-Colom?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano's not here. Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore? And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Please, a motion-
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, unanimously for the receiver slash superintendent to discuss with the state, our recommendation to have the changes made to the policies that are presented to reflect the current federal laws, state laws, and the D E S I's updates. We will now move on to approval of meeting minutes. I am going to ask that we accept these meeting minutes on a separate basis. So is there a motion to accept the, so the August meeting does not have a date on it, on here? But it was, um, August twenty-second, so if we can just get that-
Yes, that's corrected.
That'll be great. So is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Motion to accept, seconded by Mr. Wellahan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Fave?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera-Colom?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano? It's not there. Uh, Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore? And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
So that passes unanimously. We will now look, can I get a motion to accept the Monday, September nineteen, uh, meeting minutes?
Madam Vice Chair.
Oh, one moment. Sorry.
Erin, we can't hear you.
We have Ms. Brunel.
Erin's trying to get our attention. I don't, we can't hear you, no. You're good?
So for roll call, can, can you just do like a thumbs up if you say you want it, thumbs down if you don't? Okay.
So Ms. Brunel, you're a thumbs up for the eight twenty-two meeting minutes? Got it. Thank you.
So now we're gonna, I need a motion to accept the September nineteen, twenty-twenty-two, um, meeting minutes? We got a motion. We got a motion from Ms. Wilson.
No, Mr. Calamore.
Mr. Calamore and a second by-
I'll second it.
Ms. Tensley-Williams. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Fave?
Abstain.
Ms. Brunel? Um, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera-Colom?
Yes.
Mr. Wellahan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore? And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay. And that one passes. So we're going to go ahead to ongoing business. Now with the ongoing business, I'm going to go one by one. This is FYI, all the information is in your packets. This is just follow-up questions that we had asked and information that we wanted. So going with the M C A S breakdown by school, that information was in your packet. Does anybody have any questions? Comments on it?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, the next one was a special education staffing update. That has also been provided. Are there any questions or comments? Nope. Chronic absenteeism update. Any questions or comment? Mr. Wellahan?
Thank you. Um, yeah, just kind of looking at the, um, the stats with the, uh, the chronic absenteeism, I'm just kind of disappointed that the numbers are still where they are. I know we're kind of post-COVID, you know, COVID, you know, is kind of in your window. I don't want to keep kind of using that as a excuse why chronic absenteeism going on per school. I'm looking at it per school. It's sort of similar, you know, thirty percent per school in some, some cases. Talked about just statistics you've shown us, for sort of just on the, you know, you got to show up to get the good grades, you know? I just don't know where these kids are, you know, um, where they are, where's the, you know, follow-up procedures, terms of getting them back to the school. I think going forward, if, you know, starts seeing them in your future, that, uh, they're just going to be your dropouts.
Yeah, I share your concern. And I say that in the, earlier in the year, the likelihood that a small number of absences will be considered chronically absent. So for example, if sixty days, if we've had sixty days of school, ten percent of that is six absence. So, um, as we go through the year, I would hope that, like, numbers go down. We're not sitting here, like, just doing nothing about it. We had a, a meeting, we had our quarterly, Q one SIP reviews. That's basically, we, we go to every single school and pull up their school improvement plan, share data, say, look, these are the commitments that you made. And it's much, a much more supportive process. Principals, what, what are you struggling with? Like, look at your data and what are the struggles that you have? In your school improvement plan, you said you were going to do X, Y, Z. Where are you at with it? What, what does your data tell you? And where do we need to focus for quarter two? Um, and I will say that our, two of our middle school, uh, um, their problem of practice, and we asked them, what's a problem of practice that you want us to help support? Two of their middle schools was this, you know, low engagement with students and for a variety of reasons. You have, you know, families that if you have a young one that's sick and their older one, like, older one stays home to help care for the younger sick student. So one of the things we, we definitely need to do, and we were talking about it today, is come up with a multi-tiered system to, to address attendance. So I look at tier one as just what all students should be getting, like, what makes a child get up every day and say, I can't wait to go to school. I love school. Is that, like, tier, that's what tier one is, is about, is making sure that school is a place where kids want to go. Tier two is, you know, so we need to look at that, like, what are you as a school principal doing to make your school a joyous and fun place? What are the, are you doing P B I S? Are you doing socials on Friday? Are you doing future? Do your students have opportunities? Like, all of these things, we want principals to start thinking about it. Not just like, oh, there's kids absent. We got to do, like, no. What are you doing so that school a joyous place and that kids want to come? And then that next layer, like, what are you doing with some students that may be out regularly? Like, what level of engagement are you calling? Are the teachers calling? F I A, Family Engagement Board? And then for chronically absent students, like, what is that next step? What does that support look like? Are you utilizing the hub? Are you working, you know, with the family? What type of communications are going out? Like, what, what struggles, you know? First of all, like, you even know that these kids are, this kid is, this particular student is out. Like, what processes have in place to make sure of that? So it's a, it's a huge problem. It's, and, and what I will say, it's like a huge focus for the next, like, you have to figure that out and make sure that we're planning for it and sharing ideas. I see some great, one of the things we talked about at PEC, for example, they do a monthly attendance meeting. Well, guess what happens when you do a monthly, not a meeting, but, uh, you know, recognize students for great attendance, month? Guess what happens? You know, if one student misses one day in that entire month, they don't get recognized. So like, a small, simple tweak to say, you know what, instead of recognizing it on a monthly basis, we're going to do it weekly. So that when a kid does come to school five days a week, they're getting recognized, like, you know, Anthony, you did a great job this week. Keep it up, you know? As opposed to like, you have one absence that month, you don't get recognized. So small tweaks like that are, they, they seem so silly, but they could be so huge and so important for a kid to be like, Mom, I don't want to stay home and, and help you with, you know, I'm just using an exam. I, if I go today, I'm going to get an award, but if I miss today, I'm not going to. You're having an ice cream social. What, like, all of those things that get kids to be, to really think about, like, I don't want to miss school, Mom. I want to go. We need to get better at that.
Those are positives. Thank you for those. I'm just concerned if, if you have, like, you know, just based on our test scores, if you have a, a child that's in fifth grade, he's reading at a fourth grade level, okay? Now he misses two weeks of school. Now he's falling, he or she is falling further behind. They get frustrated, stop coming, you know, and, you know, the, the cycle continues. So that, that's my main concern is the students that are struggling. You got, got to get them in. We got to get them back. We got to get them, you know? I know there's job openings for the para professionals that we're trying to fill, you know? I know that, but I'm just, I'm worried that we're losing some of those students. That's my concern. Thank you.
Mr. Calamore?
Should, this, here meal. When you come into the school, are they getting properly fed? Do the stu, the students want more? These are just little things that the child would want to go to school for, getting better nutrition. Those lines, think about.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
I have a lot of, uh, good ideas. And the pandemic kind of kept me back from really going back into school. But I have a lot of good ideas with arts and crafts, things that can really make the kids happy. So I'm going to go into some of the schools and show it to the principals, you know, and the teachers and see what they think. But we need to make them want to come to school. I totally agree with you. And there are ways that we can do that. So, you know, my little, whatever, my little drop in the bucket, I think might do some good. So I'll do that pretty soon.
Other? Okay. So the next thing that I have here, but, Ms., if we're not able to get Ms. Brunel, it says, "Updates from subcommittees," and I know, I believe they had a meeting. I just looked at the September. I don't see where they might have given, uh, report, but was there a joint school committee, city council thing?
No, Erin's saying no.
Oh, okay. All right then. So there's no updates from the subcommittees. We already got, oh, then go ahead.
I, I do have one more update that, um, so, uh, there has been a proposal sent, um, to our superintendent, um, for a full policy review, um, done by M A S C. And, um, so that is for ten thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and it could range up to eighteen months to complete this full review. So he's taking that under advisement.
Thank you so much. So I guess we'll move on to announcements. Unfortunately, Ms. Brunel is not here with us in person. She's on Zoom and we can't even hear her. We're just going to have to see her reaction. Oh, an update from the building committee.
Because Erin, or actually, I just saw her come off mute.
Yeah, but it does nothing.
Okay, sorry. So Erin, just give me a thumbs down if I do a poor job representing you or a thumbs up. If I do a, I can never do it as good as she could. But, uh, we did have a, uh, the building committee did meet. It was a full building committee where we looked at three different designers that took a look at our ed plan and, uh, looked at, took their model schools that they had designed before, including Jones Witsit, which was the one that did our original design of, of PEC back in twenty nineteen. There were, you know, and, and the names of the firms are escaping me, but we took a look at, uh, each, it was a meeting on last Thursday from five o'clock to nine o'clock. And each designer was given a sixty-minute block to present their maps. You know, we saw a lot of great designs. They were able to show aerial views and how it aligned to our educational plan. So we looked at that and the committee, um, the committee is tasked with, uh, coming back together before our meeting. I'm looking to see if there's a thumbs down or a thumbs up there. But, uh, we talked about what we liked about design one, design two, and then design three. And we also talked about some of the costs that were associated with each design, which was an important, um, conversation. So we are, uh, going to be getting back together as a committee to, to finalize and stamp like what, what the building committee feels we should, uh, move forward with in terms of, uh, of the designers that we looked for. Uh, the mayor was there. Erin, thumbs up, thumbs down? Sideways?
Two of them.
You got, you got two thumbs up.
You got two.
Two.
So that, that is the update from the building committee. Um, I-
All right, so, um, going to announcements, as I said, Erin unfortunately is not here, present with us here in person. But, um, on November fourth, um, Ms. Brunel was awarded the All-State School Committee Member for her hard work and dedication to our families, students here in the district. And that, and that was through the Division Nine, which is our, our, our district is considered urban as well as we are Division Five when we're looking at the geographical aspect. So congratulations to Ms. Brunel, um, on her award. Holy oak in the house over there, huh? I know that, um, Ms. Wilson, uh, learned a lot and was networked and, and met a lot of. Absolutely. Sounds good. And then last but not least, we do have here a proclamation. for our superintendent slash receiver, Mr. Soto. And it reads like this. The City of Holyoke and the Holyoke School Committee do hereby congratulate, uh, says Anthony Soto, but I'm gonna say, um, Superintendent Anthony Soto on being recognized as this year's Puerto, at this year's Puerto Rican month. Anthony is a Holyoke native working for the Department since two thousand and sixteen. The City of Holyoke is proud of your leadership and wants to honor you and to recognize your work and your commitment to the Latino community. And witness whereof I have here and to set my hand in cause to be affixed the official seal this twenty-first day of November twenty-second. Congratulations, um, job. Uh, two, yeah, another one to put up.
It does. I just wanna say thank you so much. It means so much to me, especially coming from a community that I love. Um, I had a lot of words to say that day. Uh, I think I made my mom out to be an abusive mom. I talked about her hitting me with the chancleta and all that, but it's all love, like, it, it was all a message about, like, what it means to me to have a Puerto Rican, strong Puerto Rican mother that always pushed me, even if it meant the chancleta was coming out, to just be the best person that I could be, and I, I love her for that, and I appreciate that, and, and just thank you. I, I know this, this means, means a lot to me, especially coming from, from this body who I have a tremendous amount of respect for. Thank you.
Thank you. I get the chancleta still to this day with my mother. That's why I gotta run fast. She will come right behind me. All right, so there's nothing, Ms. Wilson, do you have an announcement? No? So being at the, Mr. Collmore?
I all know. I hope you all know that we got a Thanksgiving Day game coming up Thursday, and it's gonna be in South
That's right. Let's go Holyoke.
Try your best to just show support of our schools over there, even if it's just for a quarter to watch the game, but show up and be supportive of our kids.
Thank you, Mr. Collmore. And also, I wanted to mention, cause I know, um, I wasn't able to email you, but the, the Christmas tree lighting, if I'm not mistaken, is December third?
December third, uh, beginning at three PM. The Merry Go-Round's gonna have unlimited free rides. Children's Museum's gonna have cra- uh, craft going on at the Children's Museum. Uh, around five o'clock, Mark Todd and the choir is gonna be there singing Christmas carols. Six o'clock, there's gonna be a parade of lights. Santa's gonna come in an engine. Tree lighting's gonna take place, and we're also gonna have a paranda led by bomba de aquí. So bring your instruments and get ready to sing.
Bring your pots and pans.
And when is the? And when is the menorah lighting?
The menor- the details are being worked out.
Okay, the first night, thank you, cause it is a Sunday.
Yep.
So I, I just equaled opportunity in time.
Absolutely. And the other thing is the special education parent advisory, um, council, they're gonna be having the, their annual holiday on December fourteenth at the Merry Go-Round. Um, and I think that's also the Kelly Community Dinner. Both at the same time, same timeframe. So hopefully you can jump from one to the other. Get food at one, ride a horse on the other, you know, it is what it is. Um, anything else? No other things that are happening between here and before our next meeting?
Yeah, well, um, I do. Just to let folks know that in December, I will be forwarding instructions to every department on the budget planning for fiscal year twenty-four. I want us somehow, some way, and you guys figure it out, to get more involved with this process as far as the school district. So I don't know if you wanna use the finance subcommittee as a sounding board perhaps, um, through your process? I know you have one internally and it's very rigorous and it's complex, but if we're talking about what we were talking about earlier when it comes to policies, somehow trying to, be a great idea to figure out how that participation takes place between the administration and the subcommittee, and then also how you report that back to the body. Where we are in the fiscal years, maybe objectives you're looking at, things you're trying to achieve, goals you wanna accomplish. Uh, you know, complications that might have, unforeseen circumstances that came forward that's, you know, bought a twist to your budget, planning process, whatever the case. I don't know how you wanna do it, but just start thinking about how you can you can do that, so that way, you know, we have a much more engaging process between the board and the administration as far as the budget's concerned.
I, I can talk about, I can speak to our attempt to engage the school committee and other stakeholders in the process. I had, uh, it's called a budget advisory committee, and we would meet three times about the three-month budget development process. And on that budget advisory committee was two school committee members, two city counselors, the, um, HTA president and the para professional president. Um, and the, the goal was to inform that committee of the progress of the budget, some of the challenges, some of the investment. Um, I thought it was a good process and engaged with committee, city council, and important stakeholders in the process. But if we just think that, like, the finance subcommittee can serve in that role, also okay with it, but just throwing that out there as, as an option, we could reintroduce the budget advisory committee that kinda, we didn't do it last year, but we did it every year. That was just cause I didn't have, I didn't have a CFO and I was trying to, you know, like, it was a tough year. Um, and we weren't, it wasn't a challenging year in terms of resources. Wasn't like we were trying to cut a four million dollar budget like we had in the past, so happy to do that again or, um, discuss with the, uh, chair of the, the subcommittee, um, what, what its desires would be in terms of being involved in that process.
And, and so in, in the end result too, before I formally accept or introduce the final budget to the council for a vote, that school department budget line item, you know, if we can get the final presentation and then a formal vote of the body. And I know it's all informal because there's no power here, but just kind of in practice, that, hey, all right, does the budget, you've heard it, like you've done in the past, you've reported, we do the vote before it goes forward to the council for, you know what I mean? Just cause when, if we are in control, we wouldn't be able to vote on a, the council would be able to accept the budget that hasn't been voted on yet by the body, so you know, we can practice that somehow in our timeline.
We have what we do every year. We still have our public budget hearing.
Right.
Um, and then immediately right after that, it's, we hear the, the presentation from the superintendent receiver, and all we do is that we accept the budget, um, as proposed by the, the receiver. So it's not like we can make changes or anything, and that's it. So and I think then city council does theirs way after us. I'm assuming, right?
I think they do theirs before us.
Oh, before?
And then they take a final vote. They usually call us in in April or May, but we're still in the budget development phase, all the way up through June. Because the state goes through, we're, we're not like Long Meadow where we could just pass our budget in December, cause we don't care about what the state's giving us. Eight, nine, all, eighty-eight percent of our budget comes from the state, and they go through governor's budget, House Ways and Means, Senate, and every time they do that, severely impacts our numbers. So that's why it's a, a much more drawn-out process where we rely on the state. We end up finalizing it sometime in June. We're balanced around May, balanced. Great. How we got from balance. Always in for, we didn't do it in subcommittee, we did it as a twice at, at about budget season with the school committee, then we have our public, public hearing, which has to be, um, forty hours after the we have a, a process for that.
Yep.
So what, one of the things that I think that if, if we're really striving to get back, get back our district. We can't wait till you get back the district to then learn the process. Um, and one of the things that the school committee members did, you had the chair, um, then the other members that were part of the subcommittee, and they were looking at line-by-line items, how the money, and it wasn't just, uh, twice a year, a meeting. It was actually probably, yeah, like every two, cause then you had the chair going to go sign the warrants and stuff like that. So although we're not, right now, we're not saying, okay, we want it weekly, um, but I think what's important is that our subcommittee really start getting into that, that mode of doing it and then bringing it, just as we're doing with the policy subcommittee as we always in it. Straight across, they always drop that. We're yeah, we really, really need to. We can't just, oh, wait in case something happens, and then all of a sudden it's, figure it out. Go ahead, Mr.
I kinda recall the process, you know, pre-receivership where we had the meetings with the, uh, the superintendent. Mr. Soto is really like a line-by-line, get the budget, where we should be at, where we were per the state, uh, not providing the resources that we should have. Deficit in this category, deficit in this category, this is, um, Brunel, me and her used to kinda harp on some of the same issues with the, uh, the funding formula. So it was always sorta, you know, uh, always kind of a, like a bad case scenario, you know, what we should have, what we're getting. So now hopefully that, that process has been resolved a little bit per the state. Funding formula has been changed. So I think maybe going forward, there'll be more of a positive, uh, meet.
Or anything else?
However you guys, you're thinking along the same lines, so that's great. In the packet of instructions, we'll include a timeline. Um, so what I'll do is, I'll forward that to you, Mildred, and you can share it with the what we're doing with departments. Um, just so you can, and we'll, we'll work on the timeline just to see, like, where and things, and, and, you know, it's, it's fluid circumstances change sometimes, the Senate and the House, you know, depending on when they decide to meet, make decisions and whatnot, it changes, but at least you'll know more or less as far as the city budget process is concerned, you know, where, where we are with reviewing department budgets, where we are with working with the finance committee of the council, where we are when we're looking to present the final version to the coun- you know what I mean? You'll have that. And that way, the committee here can decide how they wanna work with the administration in between, you know, between that.
Alrighty, so, oh, I thought Ms. Wilson was gonna say something else. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Rivera-Cologne. Roll, any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Lafave?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Ms., Ms. Brunel? Is she here? I don't see her. Is she giving a thumbs up? Okay. Um, Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera-Cologne? Uh, Mr. Willingham?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Collmore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson, and Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We are journeying at nine fifty PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe and happy Turkey Day, Thanksgiving Day.
Happy blessed Thanksgiving.
Eat all you can. Thank you. See you in December nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken.